Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, February 13th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is now 10:15 a.m., and we have eight members present. Too shy of a quorum, but this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and recognition scheduled. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Perry.
Okay, great. Okay. We're gonna do it first. Everybody come out and stand with us. All of you, yeah. All right, you're the star, okay? And the grandparents, too. Grandma, grand... They don't want to come? Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm standing here today with a very special young lady, and her name is Bianca Marufo. And she is a very special and wonderful person whose story I wanted to share with all of you today. Bianca is 11 years old and is currently attending the sixth grade. And, as you can tell by the story I'm about to share with you, she has a heart of gold. Her father, Daniel Marufo, is an acting senior lead officer at the Newton Division for the Los Angeles Police Department. And her mother is a sergeant in the Northeast Division for LAPD. Officer Marufo told my staff member, Marta Mercado, that one Sunday morning Bianca woke up and told him and his wife, her mother, about a dream she had. In the dream, she had a school project where she was assigned to change roles with another child, and that during the course of the dream, she did just that, and she changed lives with another child. The child in her dream was suffering from cancer. After she awoke, she told her parents about her dream, and then about a very important decision she had made as a result of that dream. She wanted to donate her hair to a girl with cancer so that a sick child could have hair also. Senior lead officer Marufo and his wife Sergeant Marufo told their daughter that they would support her decision, but that they would leave it up to her to do the research as to how to do that. By that Sunday night, she had found on the internet a nonprofit group called Lock of Love. It's a company that takes hair donations in order to make wigs for those suffering from cancer. Her parents cautioned her to take her time in making the decision because it was so significant. By that Friday, she was seated in a barber chair getting her head shaved so that she could donate the maximum amount of her hair for the charity. In support, both her mother and his partner shaved their heads. And I wanted to take this opportunity to share Bianca's story with her and to highlight her generosity and her desire to help others, as well as her maturity and the compassion she has exhibited, and her kind, kind spirit. And this morning, I'd like to present Bianca to you today and ask her if she would like to say just a few words to all of us. Would you like to do that?
Thank you for the award. Um, I said I received them.
Okay, it's all right. You can tell that. I hope that you hope that your hair helps somebody.
Yeah. And I hope that the hair that I donated helps somebody that doesn't have any hair because they have cancer.
That's okay. That's okay. And I would also like to recognize her family. Again, her mother, Blanca Marufo, sergeant in the Northeast Division. And her father, whom you've met, and then Danielle, her younger sister, to her left. And then her grandparents, Daniel and Vera, are here as well. And I want to thank all of them for coming and standing here in support of her today. She's a wonderful person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's just take one more picture with the certificate. Stand off here, and we'll take it over here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcia, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ledlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villagosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session, and colleagues, before calling upon our next presentation, let me remind us that we have quite a busy morning today. What I suggest we do is proceed next to go through the agenda and dispense with consent items, call matters special. We do have item 27 on the agenda, which has a noon deadline, not only for council approval but for mayor's signature. I suggest that we waive rules this morning and take up item 27 before the First Order of Business, which is public comment. We also have extensive public comments and a number of other presentations to be conducted this morning with some very, very special guests. So my point is, we have a lot of very important business today. Everybody's in a rush, everybody's in a hurry, and everybody would like to be first. But let me allow us to proceed in the sequence that I have suggested. And with that being said, Mr. Clerk, First Order of Business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves, Ms. Gruel seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Villagosa seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are a few items to be continued. There's been a request by Councilmember Villagosa to continue item two for two weeks to February 27th.
Okay, members' request to continue item number two without objection, so ordered. Next item?
There's also been a request to continue item 23 to Tuesday, February 17th.
Members' request to continue item 23 also without objection.
Item one is confirmation of a city official, the appointment of Ms. Diana Rodriguez to the Affordable Housing Committee. Housing Committee report recommending approval has been distributed to all members.
Okay, let's hold this temporarily on the desk. Let's go through the rest of the agenda, please.
Items two through nine are items for which public hearings have been held. On item nine, a public hearing was held in the Budget, Finance, and Public Safety Committees, and that joint report has been distributed to all members.
Okay, members two through nine now before us. Public hearings having been held, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Item two has been continued, three through nine remaining before us. Any requests for specials? Ms. Han?
I'd like to call four special, please.
Four called special by Ms. Han. Any other specials?
Number three.
Three called special by Mr. Labange. Five through nine remaining before us. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on item number nine, please. Next item?
Items 10 through 26, with the exception of 23, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items 10 through 26 are before the City Council today, and I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items 10 through 26. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 27 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, item 27 now before us, and Mr. Garcia has yet to arrive, Chairman of the Committee. Let's call this special for just a minute here as we await Mr. Garcia's arrival and some technical amendments. Public hearing has also previously been held in item 27 in the Housing Committee. I believe item 28 is a closed session matter. Let's hold all closed session items on the desk. Mr. Clerk, I believe that brings us back to item number one, the appointment of Ms. Rodriguez. If she's here, if she would please come forward at this time. Members, public hearing has been held on item number one. We do have a committee report recommending confirmation of Ms. Rodriguez. Members wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, you're approved. Thank you for your service to the city. Fourth with, please, on item number one. And as we await Mr. Garcia's arrival, let me call upon Mr. Labange for our next presentation.
Now, Mr. President, members, we have someone very special to the city of Los Angeles today. We're honoring Robert DeFeo, a 44-year veteran of the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Let's give Bob DeFeo a great hand. Bob DeFeo is a first-generation American, born in Providence, Rhode Island, and raised in a small rural community in Warwick, and where he worked in local farms to pay his way through parochial schools, and joined the Marine Corps in 1953. Went on active duty after he graduated high school. He served in the United States military in a variety of assignments throughout the United States Marine, and was highly regarded as a Marine. And you're never a retired Marine, you're never a former Marine, you're always a Marine. And Bob DeFeo is a great Marine. He returned to California, got married, and started a family. But on the great day in February in 1960, Bob DeFeo joined the Los Angeles City Fire Department and has been one of its most courageous leaders throughout his years. Highlights of his career include the famous Bel Air Fire, also the Century City Fire that took place in central city of Los Angeles, several of the fires at the Pony Square and other fires that we caused for new ordinance to protect people as those properties were valuable lessons of the life loss, but valuable lessons how to protect in the construction of buildings in the future for future people who may live there. But he was also a great instructor and teacher as a firefighter at our drill tower in the Training Division. He's very involved in all aspects of the fire service, various task force commanders at stations throughout our city. And I got to know him many years ago when he was a battalion chief. It was a great pleasure to know and work with him. He was at Great Battalion Five when I was a deputy for John Ferraro. He also served Supply and Maintenance Division. He worked in Battalion 11 in the first district of Ed Reyes's area, which is the busiest house with Engine 11 running all night long. He has been assigned downtown in Division One, which serves and protects this building. And right before this presentation, he took his beautiful family up to the top of City Hall, and then Bob said there, "I'm protecting all those people right now. Just don't call me, I got a lot of stairs to run down." But he was a great, great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader. He was a great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts Riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader.
...her chair getting her head shaved so that she could donate the maximum amount of her hair for the charity. In support, both her mother and his partner shaved their heads. And I wanted to take this opportunity to share Bianca's story with her and to highlight her generosity and her desire to help others, as well as her maturity and the compassion she has exhibited and her kind, kind spirit. And this morning, I'd like to present Bianca to you today and ask her if she would like to say just a few words to all of us. Would you like to do that?
Thank you for the award. Um, I said I received them.
Okay, it's all right.
You can tell that I hope that you hope that your hair helps somebody.
Yeah. And I hope that the hair that I donated helps somebody that doesn't have any hair, because they have cancer.
That's okay. That's okay. It's very special. And I would also like to recognize her family. Again, her mother, Blanca Marufo, Sergeant in the Northeast Division, and her father, whom you've met, and then Danielle, her younger sister to her left, and then her grandparents, Daniel and Vera, are here as well. And I want to thank all of them for coming and standing here in support of her today. She's a wonderful person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's just take one more picture with the certificate. Let's stand off here and we'll take it over here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villaragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. And colleagues, before calling upon our next presentation, let me remind us that we have quite a busy morning today. What I suggest we do is proceed next to go through the agenda and dispense with consent items, call matters special. We do have item 27 on the agenda, which has a noon deadline, not only for council approval, but for mayor's signature. I suggest that we waive rules this morning and take up item 27 before the first order of business, which is public comment. We also have extensive public comment and a number of other presentations to be conducted this morning with some very, very special guests. So my point is, we have a lot of very important business today. Everybody's in a rush, everybody's in a hurry, and everybody would like to be first. But let me allow us to proceed in the sequence that I have suggested. And with that being said, Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves, Ms. Gruel seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Villaragosa seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are a few items to be continued. There's been a request by Councilmember Villaragosa to continue item two for two weeks to February 27th.
Okay, members, request to continue item number two without objection, so ordered. Next item.
There's also been a request to continue item 23 to Tuesday, February 17th.
Members, request to continue item 23, also without objection.
Item one is confirmation of a city official, the appointment of Ms. Diana Rodriguez to the Affordable Housing Committee. A housing committee report recommending approval has been distributed to all members.
Okay, let's hold this temporarily on the desk. Let's go through the rest of the agenda, please.
Items two through nine are items for which public hearings have been held. On item nine, a public hearing was held in the Budget and Finance and Public Safety Committees, and that joint report has been distributed to all members.
Okay, members, two through nine now before us. Public hearings having been held, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Item two has been continued, three through nine remaining before us. Any requests for specials?
Yes.
Ms. Han.
I'd like to call four special, please.
Four called special by Ms. Han. Any other specials?
Number three.
Three called special by Mr. Labange. Five through nine remaining before us. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on item number nine, please. Next item.
Items 10 through 26, with the exception of 23, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items 10 through 26 are before the City Council today, and I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items 10 through 26. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 27 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, item 27 now before us, and Mr. Garcetti has yet to arrive, Chairman of the Committee. Let's call this special for just a minute here as we await Mr. Garcetti's arrival and some technical amendments. Public hearing has also previously been held on item 27 in the Housing Committee. I believe item 28 is a closed-session matter. Let's hold all closed-session items on the desk. Mr. Clerk, I believe that brings us back to item number one, the appointment of Ms. Rodriguez. If she's here, if she would please come forward at this time. Members, public hearing has been held on item number one. We do have a committee report recommending confirmation of Ms. Rodriguez. Members wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, you're approved. Thank you for your service to the city. Forthwith, please, on item number one. And as we await Mr. Garcetti's arrival, let me call upon Mr. Labange for our next presentation.
Now, Mr. President, members, we have someone very special to the City of Los Angeles today. We're honoring Robert DeFeo, a 44-year veteran of the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Let's give Bob DeFeo a great hand. Bob DeFeo is a first-generation American, born in Providence, Rhode Island, and raised in a small rural community in Warwick, in where he worked in local farms to pay his way through parochial schools, and joined the Marine Corps in 1953. Went on active duty after he graduated high school. He served in the United States military in a variety of assignments throughout the United States Marine and was highly regarded as a Marine. And you're never a retired Marine, you're never a former Marine, you're always a Marine. And Bob DeFeo is a great Marine. He returned to California, got married, and started a family. But on the great day in February in 1960, Bob DeFeo joined the Los Angeles City Fire Department and has been one of its most courageous leaders throughout his years. Highlights of his career include the famous Bel Air Fire, also the Century City Fire that took place in central city of Los Angeles, several of the fires at the Pony Square and other fires that we caused for new ordinance to protect people as those properties were valuable lessons of the life loss, but valuable lessons how to protect in the construction of buildings in the future for future people who may live there. But he was also a great instructor and teacher as a firefighter at our Drill Tower in the Training Division. He's very involved in all aspects of the fire service, various task force commanders at stations throughout our city. And I got to know him many years ago when he was a battalion chief. It was a great pleasure to know and work with him. He was at Great Battalion Five when I was a deputy for John Ferraro. He also served Supply and Maintenance Division. He worked in Battalion 11 in the first district of Ed Reyes's area, which is the busiest house with Engine 11 running all night long. He has been assigned downtown in Division One, which serves and protects this building. And right before this presentation, he took his beautiful family up to the top of City Hall, and then Bob said there, I'm protecting all those people right now. Just don't call me, I got a lot of stairs to run down. But he was a great, great commander for the fire service here as a division commander. He also had many staff jobs. He's a great leader for us. I did mention the significant events of the Bel Air Fire, the Watts riots, the Manaville Canyon incident of the great flood, the Pony Hotel fire, Union Bank high-rise, the Baldwin Hills fire, both Central Libraries fires, the civil disturbance of 1992, the Burlingame apartment fire, the Northridge earthquake, and he was the incident commander at the Northridge Meadows apartment house. He was a task force leader just recently in the World Trade Incident when he went back after 9/11 to lead Los Angeles City and County firefighters in their efforts back there. Recently, he was involved in our Southland Brush Fire Incident as a commander up in the San Bernardino Mountains as a leader, as we sent firefighters from the City of Los Angeles to assist San Bernardino in that tragic event. Bob has received numerous awards for service and bravery. He was awarded the Fire Department's Award of Merit for his heroic rescue in the flood in Laurel Canyon many, many years ago. And he got to meet at a community meeting the woman who he rescued. It was a Volkswagen, wasn't it? A Volkswagen. At a community meeting at a fire station several years later, which is a wonderful aspect of how the world turns. He's a proud father of five, a grandfather of 10 beautiful children, a wonderful man. He currently serves as the president of Los Angeles City Fire Historical Society. I said that incorrectly, chief. It's the Los Angeles Fire Department Historical Society. I want it to be the Los Angeles City Fire Department Historical Society, but that's an editorial, but I won't go there. But truly what he is, is a great leader, members. This is a great public servant who, for 44 years, got up at 4:30 every morning, if he was working in a firehouse, 5 o'clock if he was working at headquarters, and he would find that fire station that he was assigned to and work 24 hours a day, get up day or night to answer the call, rose to the ranks, became a chief, a division chief, which is responsible, everything from the border of the city limits in east Los Angeles all the way to the Pacific, from Mulholland down to the Santa Monica Freeway. Plus, he's truly a remarkable man, and I would like us to salute again Bob DeFeo on his pending retirement, Los Angeles City Fire Department. All right. Before you speak, Bob, I'm going to ask that our fire chief, Bill Babatry, say a few words about this great firefighter.
Thanks, Tom, I appreciate it. And Bob is really a special person to me. Forty-four years in the department, I'd say we got our money's worth out of him and certainly helps our retirement statistics. But more important, when I was appointed fire chief nine years ago, some of you may remember there are a number of issues around the department, particularly in the recruit training and hiring. And Jackie Goldberg, who was working very closely with us, which is another way of saying she was keeping her eye on us, was very concerned about the appointments I was going to make to certain positions and the key positions. And when I approached her and told her that I wanted to appoint Bob DeFeo as the head of our Training Division, she couldn't have been happier. Bob had been working out in Battalion Five, she was well aware of the things that he did out in the community and of his reputation. And he offered me a tremendous resource through the first few years that I was a fire chief. He was that bridge between the older firefighters on the department, the confidence they wanted to see in the direction that we were going. At the same time, no matter how much his seniority had on the job, he's been one of the most progressive minds in our departments for all the time he has served on the department. He's been a tremendous contributor, and certainly his legacy will live on in many of the firefighters you see here today that are here just to honor this special presentation that you're making to him. So I want to wish him, on behalf of the entire department, the best in his retirement. I know his family is looking forward to seeing a little bit more of him, and certainly his involvement in the museum will keep him very close to the department in the years to come. Thank you so much for honoring him here today.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and say thank you for all your hard work. Colleagues, about eight or 10 years ago, we started talking about converting the old, the Naval Academy into a fire, a major fire institution, fire training institution facility. And it was through his hard work and working with congressional office, working the politics in the Capitol, just really stuck his nose to the grindstone and made it happen. And I just want to thank you so much because literally you've changed how we train and how we look at preparation of our firefighters. And it's through that facility, I believe, that's became a major intake for a lot of our operations. And I just want to thank you for your hard work. It's a pleasure working with you, a true gentleman and very cognizant of community issues. And again, thank you so much for your hard work, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you. And Bob, I want you to just turn around. I asked all the members of the Fire Department to stand. This is Task Force Three, Task Force Four, all the administration, all the support staff, the secretaries, administrative assistants, everybody. They're all here for you, Bobby and your beautiful family.
Wow. Forty-four years, and it finally comes to this. I'd like to thank the, in Tom's words, the members of this great council and the great city of Los Angeles for allowing me to serve for 44 years. And I truly mean that. I've had the opportunity to be during some tumultuous times during the city. The Fire Department in the 44 years has really grown from a firefighter to an all-service, all-risk service. And you really appreciate that for the technical knowledge, the skills, and the training that Councilman Reyes helped us put together at the Naval Marine Corps Reserve Center. But I really am so proud to have served with all the men and women that we have right here, right now. They're the ones who keep this city safe. And the other part, be able to raise a beautiful family like I have for 44 years. Every two weeks, I got a paycheck. At the beginning, it wasn't very much, but now it's a little bit more, and thank you.
How much more, Bob?
And I want to thank the council for that. And I want to thank again the support you've given the Fire Department. In the 44 years, I've dealt with the council on a variety of occasions. This council probably has the most support I've seen for the fire service of all the ones that I've served, and I really want to thank you on that. And the other part is, as president of the Historical Society, we might be coming back for some more support. So I hope to see you in the near future, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bobby, do you want to introduce your family? Can I have Bobby introduce his wonderful family right here?
My wife Linda, who's put up with me for these many years. Besides Linda is Julian George, a retired firefighter from Fire Station 10, my father-in-law, a Belmont graduate, actually.
Well, tell everybody where Linda went.
Well, Linda went to John Marshall High, of course. Councilman Labange is alma mater also. My daughter-in-law, Kathy. My grandson, Christopher. My grandson, Connor. My son, Bill, who's a firefighter paramedic at Fire Station 43. My granddaughter, Katrina. My daughter, Carol, and her husband, Chris. And again, they all thank you for the support you've given, and we were able to raise them all. Thanks again.
Thank you. Everybody on the Fire Department, Robert DeFeo, we're going to meet on the steps of City Hall and take a great group shot if you've got a moment to go through the rotunda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And before proceeding to the next presentation, Mr. Garcetti has arrived, the chairman of our Housing Committee. If I can ask him to speak on 27, you need another minute? Okay. Off for our next presentation, then let me recognize Councilmember Villaragosa. Mr. Villaragosa, presentation.
Mr. President, can I just take a stand right here? We have a great ambassador with us.
Thank you, thank you.
Ambassador Liwanika, her excellency is here, visited us, the ambassador to the United States from Zambia, and we want to welcome her. She's going to be spending the weekend in Los Angeles. Luusaka, our sister city, will have their various big dinner tomorrow night. She was sitting in the second row, and I said, I want to get this ambassador to the front right away. So please, let's welcome her all, all the way from Zambia, to the City Council of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. Just say a few words, just say hello.
Thank you very much. Good morning, honorable councilwomen and honorable councilmen. I am delighted to be here. It's my great honor and pleasure to come and reinforce and re-energize our twin relationship with the city of Luusaka and Los Angeles. I would like to invite many of you to come back and visit Zambia, see one of the seven wonders of the world, Victoria Falls, see game and a lot of world game and lodges, come and meet the great people, and come and invest in agriculture, in tourism, in precious mining, in the energy sector, and make friendship. And let's have more of the exchanges. I'm delighted to be here. I bring you greetings to Zambia. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
Mr. Villaragosa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Villaragosa. If I could call Mr. Ludlow up to the microphone and Dolores Huerta. Mr. President, members, if I could also call up Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Garcetti. Members, today we declare Los Angeles Dolores Huerta Day. It's a real honor for me to be here today, standing alongside a woman who in many ways represents the best that America has to offer. Just a few short days ago, we had an opportunity to witness the election of Speaker Fabian Nunez. It was an incredible event that day. We got to hear his story, an immigrant who had come to this great country, whose father was a gardener who worked in the homes in La Jolla, who was able to stand there alongside of him as he was elected the 66th Speaker of the California State Assembly. I remember thinking, and I dare say, all of us were sharing those thoughts that day, what a great country we live in, that the son of, that an immigrant could come to this country, recently arrived, and be the Speaker of the California State Assembly. Make no mistake about it, Fabian Nunez was elected speaker. Many of the people who you see here alongside me are councilmembers today because of this woman and her work. She is a trailblazer. When we think of Cesar Chavez, all of us think of Martin Luther King, we think of those two great Americans who reminded the country that it had to be more than it was, that it had to be all, that it's held itself out to be. Dolores Huerta was born in 1930. She was, her mother was a single mom, her father left when she was young. She was raised in Arizona. They moved to California. She's the mother of 11 children, 14 grandchildren. She's been involved in civil rights her entire life. She was a teacher here in California in those days when there weren't very many teachers who looked like her. And think about this, back then, Dolores Huerta, a teacher, working with the children whose parents were working in the fields and sometimes were working in the fields themselves. Think about what those children must have felt like, having her as a role model. She left teaching because she said, "I couldn't stand seeing kids come to class hungry and needing shoes. I thought I could do more by organizing farmworkers than by trying to teach their hungry children." In many ways, those words personify what Dolores Huerta's life has been all about. A life of trying to use the education and the skills that she was able to develop over the years to teach others to fight for themselves, to teach others that you can't just stand there and allow injustice to occur. You have to speak out, you have to stand up, you have to do all that you can to change the world. In many ways, Dolores Huerta, for us today, was that catalyst who helped to open up the country, who helped to put the attention of the exploitation of farmworkers in this state, who helped to organize the United Farm Workers Union, but in many ways, did much more than that. What she did was remind this great state that this, the golden state, has to be the place where the American dream is played out on a scale and scope second to none. Dolores sometimes blushes when you share how old she is, how young she is. She's nearly 75 years young. Yes, you're 74, but you're nearly 75.
Seventy-three, almost seventy-five.
Nearly 75. You will get to 75, my sister. And what's incredible about Dolores is here she is, 73 years young, and she still has that same energy that she did when she was in her 30s, helping to organize the United Farm Workers Movement, helping Cesar Chavez with the UFAK, helping to do what all of us are here recognizing. And throughout all those years, here she is, still organizing, still trying to change the world. Last night, some of us were at an event in her honor, in support of the Dolores Huerta Foundation. What's incredible about this foundation is that Dolores Huerta understands that it's not individuals who make social change, it's people working together, acting in organizations to change the world. And so she has founded this organization for the purpose of creating new organizers, new activists, people involved in the world and trying to change it. And so today, we honor the lifetime of service, the lifetime of commitment to social justice, and we declare this day Dolores Huerta Day. I'd like, like to call up my colleagues, beginning with Martin Ludlow, to say a few words about Dolores Huerta.
Thank you, Councilmember Villaragosa. One of the things that really stands out in my mind about Dolores is not only the passion that she brought on the number of issues that Councilmember Villaragosa just mentioned, but her stance to fight for the rights of women. And one woman that I know she fought for is one of our colleagues, and I'd like to ask her to come up, Councilmember Wendy Gruel, if you could come up and join us as well. And I know that, I know that we equally share a great sense of admiration and respect. Come on up, Wendy. Equal amounts of respect for the work that Dolores has done, but I wanted to just share a couple of quick thoughts. One is, last night it was mentioned, and I could really relate to this comment that was made, still to this day, and he commented on, I'm sort of height-challenged here. And there was this reference made to Dolores being so tiny, and it's amazing that this tiny woman, years after the grape boycott, still resonates because so many of us tremble as we reach for a grape. So many of us still tremble, and we ask the question, is this grape okay to eat? And it really came true for me when my 13-year-old daughter asked me the same question. And I know that your work, your legacy, has been generational and has moved from generation to generation and will live many years beyond each and every one of us. Councilmember Villaragosa rattled off some very significant items relative to her track record and the history, but those of you that are watching on TV, those of you in the chambers, just know, from workers' rights to human rights, to environmental justice, many of us forget about the fight to eliminate the pesticides in the fields and to make the chemical... the chemicals that are used to spray, or they spray on the food that we eat, is much safer today throughout this country because of the work of Dolores Huerta. To civil rights issues, to this day, being able to pick up the phone and talk to Reverend Jesse Jackson in minutes, or Senator Ted Kennedy in seconds, that's the legacy and that's the respect that is shared throughout the world. Last night, it was referenced that none of us will stop fighting until this woman receives the Nobel Peace Prize. That was referenced last night. And today, in council colleagues, Wendy Gruehl, Antonio Villarreal, and myself will be introducing a motion to have on record the city of Los Angeles encouraging Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger to reappoint Dolores Huerta to the UC Board of Regents. We can do something today that makes sure that we're not just celebrating and just giving the accolades, but that her work, as Antonio Villarreal mentioned, continues fighting for the rights of children and students throughout California. I'm honored to join you today in making this Dolores Huerta Day. Si se puede.
Thank you, Councilmember Villarreal, for organizing today, and congratulations, Dolores, again. You've been with us before, and the faces may have changed a little bit because of turmoil, but it's so wonderful to have you back with us again today. I want to dovetail a little bit about what Councilmember Ludlow began to discuss. He and I were together just a couple of months ago when USC was announcing and dedicating a lectureship at the university in honor of Dolores and involving Dolores Huerta. And I told the crowd then, and I'll repeat it today, that it must have been very difficult for USC to figure out exactly which school this lectureship was going to be affiliated with. A lot of people assumed immediately, oh, Public Policy and Social Studies, because of her work in civil rights, environmental justice, and worker protections. But I told the group then, I said, you know, it could easily have been a Dolores Huerta Lectureship in the Science and Engineering Department because she learned the hard way all about chemistry. It could easily have been at the Business School because she learned the hard way about economics. It could have been in the Law School because she learned the hard way what it means to advocate for changes in the law and have the law applied to all people equally as this country is supposed to represent. I could go on and on, but I think you get my point. The battles, the struggles, and yes, the successes of Dolores Huerta and the United Farm Workers are legendary and a critical part of California politics, and it's come by way of her tenacity, her struggle, her persistence that continues to this day, and it comes from having maybe not learned the formal way, but have learned nonetheless. And I would put my faith in her hands when it comes, when it comes to going up against the strongest forces of this country and the world, corporate and otherwise. She practices what she preaches, she's a role model for women and men alike of all ages. Los Angeles and California will never be the same. Thank you, Dolores.
It's a great honor for me to be standing next to you, Dolores, today, and when I was in the legislature, I got to meet you and get to know you and actually work on legislation with you. My father didn't live long enough to see me get elected, nor did he ever meet you personally. And my mother had a chance to meet you one time in Sacramento, and she was very impressed. She kind of didn't know much about you, but when I started telling her the stories about you and what you had done, she was so proud of you. And one of the things that I shared with my father before he passed away, when I learned as a young man that, about the pesticides and things of that nature that they used on our food, and I would, I told him in Spanish, but I'll say it in English, I said, Dad, you know, they, they spray all kinds of chemicals on our food, and he said, well, mijo, they didn't just spray it on the food, they sprayed it on our heads when we were working in the fields. My father was a farm worker, and he was a very humble man, and he came to this country with a first-grade education, along with my mother, with a second-grade education. And that's the work that they did, and they did it gladly, they did it proudly. But I just want to say thank you, Dolores, for standing up for them, because quite frankly, they were humble and quiet people, and they just did their job because it was the thing to do, and they didn't realize that there were laws that could be made to protect them. They didn't realize that things didn't have to be that way and things needed to change. You got out of that classroom and left a very noble profession, and you certainly did much, much more by teaching the masses, educating the masses, and changing a country for the better. So congratulations. I think it's an honor for Los Angeles to have this day in your honor. It's an honor for us, and thank you so much for being such a great and wonderful American and an American who looks a lot more like me, and I'm very proud of you. One of my colleagues joking, he said, are you going to go up there because you're Latinos? I said, my father was a farm worker like Dolores, but I am Latino and proud of it. So thank you very much, Dolores, for being such a role model for everyone and certainly for me. Thank you.
I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Villarreal, for putting forth and showing the leadership to recognize this great figure in our history. You know, my children have assignments. My daughter, who's now in 10th grade, back when she was in the 6th grade, asked me, who are heroes? And I said, well, our legacy of heroes aren't as long as I would wish our cultures can reflect in this great country, but there are three or four giants out there. And there's one who's a woman. Her name is Dolores Huerta. She did her research, and she was just fascinated. She shared it with her classmates, most who weren't Latino and Latina, and she said, I didn't realize we had persons like that. And so, you know, mija, she's still alive, and she's still out there, and she's still out there marching with us. The janitor's strike, all the struggles that we've been going through, the fight for our license, all of these struggles, she's still there, and she reminds everyone that we still have a lot more work to do. And I just want to share with everyone here and you for the great symbol that you live and for the leadership and for that legacy that you leave for our children and the hope you inspire for all our young people. Thank you very much.
It's incredible listening to people's personal stories here and to hear us praising Dolores for just a little bit of what she deserves praise for, and I think that, I know Dolores is probably asking, or thinking inside her head, stop talking, I got to get back to work, because she is a person who is action-oriented, but I want to thank Dolores as well, extended members of my family who were farm workers long before there was representation. We honored Rigoberto Menchu here a few months back, and I wholeheartedly agree because it was just that weekend when we were at Eagle Rock High School, and Dolores came out to be with Rigoberto Menchu and to talk about peace, to talk about rights, to talk about the struggles, whether it's trying to find a soccer field in Taylor Yard, like Mr. Reyes and Mr. Villarreal and myself and others have been fighting for, and Dolores being right alongside with us, or whether it's looking for global peace. Dolores Huerta understands the intersection, that something like human rights can't be an abstract thing that happens over there, it happens right here. The other lesson that Dolores has taught me is that leadership is not about creating followers, and so often those people that are uplifted lift themselves to a place where they create a cadre of followers, sometimes very effective, very loving, very focused followers. But Dolores understands that leadership is about creating more leaders, and every single day she is out there in our community, whether it's somebody who's just reading her history or whether they have the joy and the smile in their eyes when they see her actually there alongside them on a picket line, alongside them on a protest march, that they too are leaders today. And the number of Dolores Huertas that she has created in the Latino community, in the women's rights community, in the human rights community, is testament to what sort of woman she is. So felicidades to Dolores. Thank you for all that you've done for this entire city and this entire world. It is the smallest honor, and we won't rest until you and Rigoberto can be side by side with your Nobel Peace Prizes. So congratulations.
Much has been said about Dolores Huerta today, all true, but we have a saying here in City Council, that girls rule, and so I just want you to know that, and that women rule. We kind of just like to say girls, but yes, women rule. As a woman, I can say that. You can't say girls rule. I can.
And I didn't.
You didn't. But Dolores, you have been a tremendous mentor for so many young women, not only here in California, but across the country. You have been a role model. You've been someone who's not just known for your work with United Farm Workers, but someone who is known, who has a passion, commitment, and dedication to making everyone's life better. If you have not had the opportunity, and some of you that may be watching today, to be at a rally with Dolores Huerta. You know, we all are passionate, we get excited, but when Dolores speaks, people listen and they get excited and they're ready to take action. And that's a true leader who can instill that into the individuals that he or she is trying to excite and to get their involvement and movement. And Dolores Huerta has done that on numerous issues. She is someone that will go down in the history books. We're going to hope to have her for a very, very, very long time, but she will have many, many books that will be written about her and about the things that she has accomplished for people who didn't have a voice. She's a voice for Latinas, she's a voice for women, she's a voice for farm workers, she's a voice for workers all across this United States and the world. I'm pleased to have her as a friend and someone who I have looked up to and someone who I only hope I can accomplish just a little bit of what she has accomplished, and that she will rub off on me a little bit. So I'm going to hold her as much as I can and get as much, you know, passion and interest from her. So I'm pleased to be part of this celebration today, and Mr. Villarreal for acknowledging her, and we're ready to introduce that motion and make sure she's there at the Regents, fighting for us and making sure our universities are representative of this state of California. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Let me...
I'd like to ask Councilmember Han to come up here for a second, and I do that because I knew Kenny Han, I sat on the MTA board with him, and I know that if he were here today, he would be joining us to acknowledge this day as Dolores Huerta Day.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate being up here, and I was glad that you boys brought another girl up here earlier, because certainly the strength of this country, the strength of this country really is around so many strong and brave and courageous women. And I am so pleased to be here as we declare this Dolores Huerta Day and realize all that you've done. And you know, and I know we've heard the stories, but it can't be said enough that one woman, one woman who really chose to be brave, to be courageous, to be strong, it's not easy, and you have come such a long way, but as Wendy said, now you're at the point in your life where just the fact that you show up, that you show up and they see your face at the rallies, you give such, you give your strength, your courage and your strength to those who right now are fighting for a better way of life, and isn't that a great place to be, that just your being, just your face, means so much to those who are still struggling? And I don't know, is there a school named after you yet?
A couple.
A couple? Because, you know, there are not enough. Is there any in Los Angeles? There are. Because I was, we're building so many schools in Los Angeles that, I know, maybe not in the 15th district, that, that I think the schoolchildren, the schoolchildren should know more about you, learn more about your history so that they might find it in them to be strong and courageous. So congratulations. This is a great day for Los Angeles, a great day.
Let me recognize Councilmember Perry.
Dolores, I just received a telephone call from Lou Santayana from the 14th district, and he wanted me to give you this message and to the group. He said that the young whippersnappers standing next to you are not giving you the recognition that you deserve and that you are Doña Huerta, and that you are above all of us, and that we have much to learn from you, and that's absolutely true, but I know you to be a humble woman who never puts herself above the struggles and the people on whose behalf she is advocating, and that, that is the example, and that is the lesson that we should learn from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
I like being described as a young whippersnapper. Actually, if we're going to talk about Doña Dolores, let me tell you that Dolores, interestingly enough, means sorrow orchards. Yes, and to think about that name, her name given long before she worked in the fields, the woman of sorrow orchards brought so much happiness and lifted the life of so many people in our fields. Now, ladies and gentlemen, let me help, please help me in welcoming Dolores Huerta.
Thank you, Antonio Villarreal, all of the council members that are here with me, and also those that are seated at their desks here. This is, of course, indeed a very great honor for me, and I do want to thank you for this honor and also for all of the support that you have given the Farm Workers Union in the past, because over the years, we have come to the City Council of Los Angeles to ask you to support us in many of the many endeavors of trying to get contracts, boycotts, et cetera, and you've always been there to help us, so I want to thank you for that very much. Any advances, any improvements that have been made in farm workers' lives, you can really feel that you are a part of that advancement that has been made here in the state of California. And when I receive this honor, I just want everyone to know that it's because of so many people that had to sacrifice to be able to form the Farm Workers Union, of course, including Cesar Chavez, our leader, but also I just want to mention that in these last few days, at the end of January and also the 10th of February, two of our martyrs were killed, and I just want to mention them so that they can be on the record, because a lot of people don't know that history, that we had. Our first martyr was a young 19-year-old Jewish woman from Boston, a student, Nan Friedman, who was killed in a strike in Florida where we were defending, you know, Haitian, Jamaican, Puerto Rican farm workers, and she was killed, hit by a truck. Our second martyr was a young Arab, Najita Fala, who was killed in Lamont, California, in a strike in 1973. And on February, February the 10th, just a couple of days ago, we had another martyr, Rufino Contreras, who was gunned down in the field in the Imperial Valley of California. And I just want to mention the other two so they will be on record, and that was, the last one was Rene Lopez, young 21-year-old farm worker who was killed because he organized his farm for an election in Fresno, and Juan de la Cruz, who was killed in a strike in Arben. But I mention these people because these farm workers who lost their lives to build this movement, and of course, the hundreds and thousands of farm workers that marched to go to Sacramento to get laws passed, many times came here to your council chambers to ask you for your support, this really, this recognition is because of what they have done, and I feel blessed that I had the opportunity to work, to be able to make a difference. But as was said earlier, we have to remember that the work is still not finished, that there are so many farm workers, even our state of California, that today are still out there working for less than minimum wage. We have, of course, throughout the country, where most states in the United States, farm workers do not even have workers' compensation. If they get hurt in the field, tough, they get no disability benefits, nobody pays their medical bills, they are totally out of luck. So we have to, we have to remember that, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, that the people that put up the food on our table, who are so many of them that are immigrants, that they're undocumented, but they're out there paying their taxes, and they do need everybody's support to be able to continue to do the productive work that they do. And again, I want to thank this Los Angeles City Council for all of the support that you've given to immigrants, to workers, to women's rights, to civil rights in the past, and thank you very much for this wonderful honor. And if I could say a few words in Spanish, could I do that just for the...
Sure, absolutely.
With your permission, with your permission, I'd like to just say... With your permission, with your permission, I'd like to just say a few words in Spanish because we do have the media here. Quiero agradecer mucho este reconocimiento que me han dado, pero también quiero al mismo tiempo acordarle a todo el mundo que este reconocimiento viene a la cuenta y al costo de muchas vidas campesinas que dieron sus vidas para que se hiciera el movimiento para mejorar la vida de los trabajadores del campo. Y también acordarle que todavía tenemos mucho trabajo que hacer porque muchos campesinos hoy en día siguen trabajando sin un sueldo adecuado, sin condiciones que los pueden proteger, sin sindicato laboral. Y que también tenemos muchos emigrantes que también están sufriendo porque no están reconocidos en nuestro país, no tienen su legalización. Y quiero agradecerle también al Consejo por toda la ayuda que han dado en el pasado y también por su apoyo que siguen dando para la gente trabajadora, para derechos civiles, para las luchas también de las mujeres. Muchísimas gracias. Again, thank you very much for this great honor that you've given us. Thank you.
We do have another presentation that I think is going to be jointly presented by Mr. Villarreal
If I could call up Wayne Tanda and the representatives from our Department of Transportation.
As Chair of Transportation, I'm proud to announce what many of us already know and have known for some time, that L.A. DOT is one of the most forward-thinking transportation departments anywhere in the country. I am a member of the Metropolitan Transit Authority, and long before I became a council member, I knew of the reputation of this department, cutting-edge technology, the reputation of this department addressing what all of us know to be the toughest traffic issues anywhere in the nation. Sometime back, this department made a request to the Metropolitan Transit Authority, the call for projects where you put your best ideas forward about what you can do to help to reduce congestion and address some of the traffic mitigation issues that are so critical to this city. And they did just that, and they came up with a transit priority system that many of us, that was designed and implemented by the city of Los Angeles and is the essential tool, if you will, to ensure that the Metro Rapid Bus Program, which is the most successful new initiative on the part of the MTA in many, many years. You know those buses, they're the red rapid buses that kind of work like a subway, they stop every mile or so, half mile. This is a picture of those Metro Rapid Buses, they're red, and they go on some of our main arteries. It was this agency that helped to put the technology to make this Rapid Bus Program a success. As a result of this technology that was developed here by our own staff here at the L.A. DOT, we have received the coveted Helen Putnam Award. That's Helen Putnam Award, which is given to those who are trailblazers in the way that the L.A. DOT is. So many congratulations on the part of the city of Los Angeles. We're very proud of this department, and I'd like the council president to join us.
Thank you, Councilmember Villarreal. And I want to thank the League of Cities who sponsors the Helen Putnam Awards for bestowing this upon our city. It's not too often that we get recognized for things that we're doing well. Far too often, we open up the newspaper and we read about the criticisms of what we're doing maybe well, but just not perfect. But today is a day for the city to celebrate and our Department of Transportation to be very proud. There's very few policy challenges and infrastructure challenges that impact the Los Angeles region, the people of Los Angeles, and our economy quite like traffic. But here's an idea that has not only been successful in the first two areas that we deployed it on, the Wilshire Boulevard route and Ventura Boulevard route, but a model that we're seeking to replicate successfully along Van Nuys Boulevard in the Valley and many other corridors throughout the city of Los Angeles to come. And so just want to speak briefly also about the League of Cities. We're all members as mayors, as council members throughout the state of California. It's basically our association. And while they do provide a tremendous amount of training and workshop and education for policymakers and decision-makers, this award is one of the vehicles where we get to exercise what we call best practices. There's no need to reinvent the wheel when there's a city that's doing something really, really well. Here's an opportunity through the awards, competition, and presentation to learn from each other. And so today, we rise and present the Metro Rapid Bus System as a model, as a program for the rest of California to learn from and to replicate our successes well. So we want to thank the League of Cities for this honor. Thank you, Mr. Villarreal, as Chairman of the Transportation Committee. And now let's hear from our general manager.
Yes.
Wayne Tanda.
Thank you very much. Wayne? Do you want to... Chris. You go first and then we'll have him. Okay. Thank you, council members, very much. You know, on behalf of the Department of Transportation and specifically the women and men who throughout their careers are trying to do the very best they can for the public, that we accept the resolutions from the council and also the award from the California League of Cities. I'd like to, while I have this, just mention that joining me are a couple of key individuals from the Department of Transportation who really made this possible. Harold Paul Ver, Sean Skeehan, Chun Wong from the department, and certainly our great partners at MTA. Rex Gebhardt is here joining us today. And of course, the partnership is we're applying the technology to assist the MTA in delivering even better services using their bus system. At this time, let me though call up...
Chris McKenzie.
Chris McKenzie, I apologize. From the California League of Cities, he's the executive director. Chris?
Thank you very much, members of the council and your outstanding staff with the Department of Transportation and the MTA. It is my privilege today on behalf of the 478 cities of the League of California Cities to recognize the excellence in your program, that your priority transportation program. It is truly an outstanding program. And so I'm here today to present the grand prize award in the Helen Putnam Award for Excellence to the city of Los Angeles for this outstanding program.
Let me recognize Mr. Labonge.
Wait, before you take the picture, I want Lon Nguyen, who's your council liaison, to jump in there. You talked about the men and women of the department. Lon, get in there.
Yes.
And also, members, Mr. Padilla spoke about bad news and all that stuff about Los Angeles. If you read Los Angeles Times story today about Sigalert on the roadway to love, did anybody read that article this morning? It talked about some guy met the girl of his dreams, but when she found out she lived in Glendale and he lived in West LA, because of traffic, he said he couldn't make the relationship. So you see how this is, I want you to take note, this traffic on Valentine's Day right here, the importance of making traffic flow safety and move across so people could get together. And also, Mr. Padilla, you said there's nothing but bad news in the paper. I just wanted to say on the back with the weather, the city of Angels is blessed with some of the greatest weather in the world. So two important points. Thank you very much. And thanks, DOT. Each and every one of those engineers and all the guys in the field posting the signs and marking the line.
And I also want to thank councilmembers Labonge and Smith, who are members of the our city transportation committee and provided a great deal of leadership. I do want to mention one thing, though. In addition to the Helen Putnam Award, the, this TPS system, the Transit Priority System that we're speaking of with the Rapid Bus Program, also received the city's Innovation Award from the Productivity Commission, a TRANI Award from Caltrans, a Blue Sky Award from Calstart, an Excellence Award from Public Technologies. They were a semifinalist in the 2002 Ford Foundation's Innovations in Government Award and the recipient of this Helen Putnam Award. So this is a well-recognized and honored program. We're excited that Los Angeles is the leader and we're looking forward to new technologies and more awards in the future. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Villarreal, Mr. Padilla. Let me recognize Councilmember Gruehl for a presentation.
I am pleased to stand here today with a woman that you all met last year when we were talking about an organization called For Grace. And I know she is coming up now, Cynthia Toussaint. She was the co-founder of For Grace, a nonprofit agency dedicated to raising public awareness of inequities in treatment of chronic pain. Recently, Cynthia went before the state legislature where she advocated for medical school criteria and continuing education for physicians, which incorporate pain awareness and gender equity in treatment for pain sufferers. Cynthia's plight is to prevent women from suffering needlessly due to undertreatment and medical neglect. Many times, doctors fail to diagnose women's pain as physical. Instead, they anticipate or suggest and assume that women's pain is psychological. Gender equity in the treatment of pain sufferers would allow women to properly be diagnosed and diagnosed in a timely manner so they have a better chance of recovery. In Cynthia's case, diagnosis and delay denied her a full recovery and cost her a promising career as a ballet dancer. This is a cause I believe in and support wholeheartedly. And State Senator Liz Fugeroa, who introduced me to Cynthia, has been a staunch supporter of For Grace and its mission. We are delighted to declare February Women in Pain Awareness Month and include in the city's legislative program support for any legislation that would advocate for medical school curricula and continuing education for physicians that incorporates pain awareness and gender equity in treatment for pain sufferers. Cynthia, your work is much appreciated and admired. I know that your voice has resonated in the halls of the state Capitol. Know that your voice is also being heard here, loud and clear, in this chamber and across the city of Los Angeles. You've been a true inspiration and someone who has fought against odds to make this an issue and for people to listen to the kind of experiences you've had. So I'm pleased to be able to present a resolution to Cynthia Toussaint, as well as this being Pain Awareness Month, and appreciate her dedication and commitment. Let's give her a great round of applause.
This is going to work, we're going to figure it out. Thank you. Good morning, Wendy. Good morning to the members of the city council. It's such an honor to be here. Hi. Thank you so much for having me. I am happy to report my Women in Pain Initiative to the members of the city, to the, excuse me. I am happy to report my Women in Pain Initiative was warmly embraced in Sacramento last week, far exceeding my expectations. And I now have the support to platform this issue to a national level. This is all very exciting and to have the support of the city of Los Angeles means the world to me, truly. Thank you, Wendy, for proclaiming February Women in Pain Awareness Month in the city of Angels. Thank you, Janice. Thank you, Jan, and thank you, Cindy, for your signatures of support. Wow. I know that many of you are familiar with my story. Briefly, I became ill with a chronic pain disease, reflex sympathetic dystrophy, 21 years ago, when I was a young ballerina with a bright future. For the first 13 and a half years of my illness, my doctors told me all of my physical problems were in my head while the RSD spread throughout my entire body, leaving me bedridden and screaming in pain for nearly a decade. The gender bias and chronic undertreatment of women who suffer pain in this country is a health care crisis and sanctioned torture that has been ignored for far too long. Women are predisposed to all of the chronic pain diseases. Studies support we feel pain more severely than men and we have a lower pain threshold. However, when we women report our pain to men, we are told it's hormonal or all in our heads. We are given sedatives and antidepressants, whereas men are much more likely to be believed and to be given painkillers. I want equal treatment for women who suffer pain in this country. Thank you. It is time our cries are heard and our names cleared. We have committed no crime and first do no harm must apply equally and without bias. I want to mention that I just ran into an old dear friend of mine, Mindy Meyer, who will be speaking before you in just a few moments. Mindy told me that she recently got RSD. Ten doctors told her that she was hysterical before she got her diagnosis. Thank God, she can still be cured. Thank you all for listening to me again. Thank you, Wendy, for so, so, so much for your support. Know that your support will help Mindy, it will help my friend Dana, who's with me today, and it will help so many other women who are suffering every day in pain needlessly. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ms. Han?
Ms. Han? Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I just rise in support to really thank you, Cynthia. Thank you for taking what could have literally destroyed you in every way and taking it and saying, no, I'm going to do something different, I'm going to change my world, I'm going to change the world. And I have to think, if we had as much attention on what you're trying to do as what happened to Janet Jackson at halftime at the Super Bowl, if we really focused on an issue, a woman's issue, that was meaningful and important and worthy of newspapers, articles, and media attention, then we truly could change the future for so many women. And I want to tell you that you are courageous, you are brave, and that means a lot to a lot of women. And I know there will be women generations to come that will be able to thank you for your willingness to share your story and stand up for what is right. And I think it's only people like you, it's only people like you that will forever change the medical community's perception of women. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and just emphasize and amplify that as we brace ourselves for cutbacks, when we look at the feminization of poverty and how that's been studied since the late 80s and where women and children are the ones who suffer the most, the thoughts, the message you share is echoing throughout many homes, especially those that are headed by women.
Yes.
And as they suffer and as we need to change, hopefully, the... And as they suffer and as we need to change, hopefully, the legislators at the state and federal level understand that the most vulnerable tend to be women and children. And this is a very real situation, and thank you for coming forward and sharing that with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to all my colleagues. And when all of us leave the room today, you remember RSD and remember Cynthia and all her hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. For our final two presentations, let me recognize Councilmember Parks.
I have two presentations, and I'd like to ask Ms. Margie Reese, our General Manager of Cultural Affairs, to come up and join me, and also Mr. Conde from the Office of the Minister of Culture for the Republic of Guinea. And I just would like, as we have asked our Cultural Affairs Department ongoing, to find new and better ways that we can expose the African-American and African culture to our entire city and region during African-American History Month. What they have done for us is to bring to the city of Los Angeles the La Ballet Africane, the national dance company for the Republic of Guinea. This company will be performing throughout the city, but their opening performance was at the Vision Theater in Lemur Park in the heart of the 8th District. And again, they will be performing throughout our city from the 12th to the 21st of this month. This ballet was created in 1952. It has been traveling throughout the world. It's a national group that is from the Republic of Guinea after the country came out of, came into independence in 1958. It's universally recognized as Africa's most renowned and accomplished dance company. They have, for spanning 50 years, its members have represented their country and the continent culture at some of the world's most prestigious international festivals. We're fortunate that in the city of Los Angeles, there will be special student and family performance series sponsored by the Target Foundation. Highlights of these performances will be First Downtown Los Angeles, Fifth and Main on February 18th, and that will be for the homeless community. They will have a free student and hearing impaired performance at the Vision Theater on the 20th. And the series will continue at the L.A. Design Center and also the Madrid Theater on Sherman Way in Conoga Park and the Warner Grand Theater in San Pedro. So we are very pleased to have and honor the La Ballet Africane here today. And I'd like to ask Ms. Margie Reese to come up, and then Mr. Conte, who will introduce the delegation.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember. It is indeed an honor for us to have secured this world-renowned company, to spend two weeks with us in the city of Los Angeles, working with our children to make sure that we spread the word that there are connections through culture throughout the world. The gentleman that we have worked with is Mr. Mamadou Conde, and I would like to ask him to introduce our special guests.
It is an honor to be here at the city of Los Angeles. It's a great honor, in the name of the Guinean Ministry of Culture, we have a great honor to also have our National Director of Culture of Guinea with us to support this great cultural exchange program that was put together by the Cultural Affairs Department. Ms. Margie Reese, so the National Director of Culture is Dr. Jubate Saido, who came from Guinea especially for this L.A. event. We also have the company choreographer, who's been with the company for many, many years. His name is Hamidu Bangura. He's actually the choreographer and the technical director of the company. We also have the company administrator, Ibrahim Agay, who's been also with this company for many years. Here we have two female dancers, Mariana Ture, Yelikani Jawara, and Mamadou Basuma, the male dancer. We also have one of our administration member here, Matthew Miller, who's my business manager, who's sitting right there. I would like to thank the city council and the mayor of Los Angeles. Last month, I was here with him when he was giving me the International Treasurer Award. I told the mayor that if you was to ask us what city in the world can be the capital of the world, I will say L.A. City should be the capital of the world. Because L.A. City is the city, people's city. They bringing all the culture and they connecting the people from Africa to Asia, to England, to Colombia, to all over the world. So it's a great honor for the city of Los Angeles to come forward and do this. Thank you so much again. And believe me, we love this city, L.A. City, the people's city.
Thank you. My next presentation, I'd like to ask Chief of Police of the City of Beverly Hills, Marvin Ionone, to come up. Marvin Ionone is a role model for me for the last 38 years. He's a person that has done everything possible in law enforcement. He just retired after 50 years in law enforcement, split approximately evenly between Beverly Hills and the city of Los Angeles. He started his law enforcement career in Los Angeles Police Department in 1956 and rose to the rank of Assistant Chief. Some of his assignments, in '74 to '79, he worked in West Bureau, also in Valley Bureau, where he commanded both of those bureaus, almost a couple of thousand officers. But also, he was instrumental in developing many innovative training programs as the deputy chief in charge of Personnel and Training Bureau. And in that time, unbelievable number of 200 different schools that he put together, also over 2,000 people per year were being trained. One of the things that, as we look and struggle with the bond funds dealing with the new communication system, Chief Ionone was in Technical Services Bureau where the initial phases of the X system was in the planning stages and later became a reality. One of the things for those that are on the budget and finance, during his tenure at Technical Services, he was also the director at dealing with our fiscal review board. And at that time, the police department budget was $350 million. So I think it's grown just a little bit since then. He also served as an Assistant Chief in both the Office of Operations, where he ran about 85% of the department, and then also in the Director of Special Services, or Special Services, where he dealt with all of the organized crime, the issues dealing with council generals, the public relations, labor relations. One of the things that I think is so outstanding in looking at his background is his educational achievements. He went to the L.A. Police Academy in 1957, where he graduated number one in his class. He received a bachelor's degree in police administration from Cal State University of Los Angeles. He was also a member of the National Honor Society. He got, received a master's degree in public service from California State University of L.A. in '67, and then went on to several accredited management courses at a variety of universities locally. He was elected as his class president at University of Southern California Management Institute, received certificates from IBM and a variety of other national executive institutes. One of the things I think that many of you may not be aware, but he was the department commander during the 1984 Olympics, when many of you marveled at the absence of traffic, absence of crime, in which, as we said after that event, it put the city of Los Angeles on the map. I wanted Marvin Ionone to come today because he is ending a 50-year career in law enforcement, no easy task, and certainly is someone that we owe a great deal to as he went through the ranks, put several programs in place, created several legacies in law enforcement in general, but also had an impact in the entire law enforcement industry throughout the nation, heading the Beverly Hills Police Department for the last couple of decades. So I'd like to honor Marvin Ionone with his certificate as he moves on into full retirement. It's his second retirement, now it's full retirement, and ask him to say a few words.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am extremely honored to be before this august body. It seems like a perfect, perfect, natural evolution for me to start out in Los Angeles in 1956 and spend almost 29 years serving the citizens of Los Angeles, which was a great honor, and then retiring from Los Angeles and going to Beverly Hills, where I finished up my nearly 50 years in this profession. And now I'm back here, ending my career in law enforcement, and I am extremely honored, and I thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Parks.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Councilman Parks, thank you. And Marv, congratulations to you. I know if Big John was still here, he'd be wanting to pat you on the back and all that work. And I think what's unique about you is that you did, as Chief Parks spoke about, the great Olympic Games and the work of all the officers, but you as the leader of that unit did such a wonderful job. But I also want to say, which is a credit to Los Angeles Police Department, I don't know if Councilman Parks would remember this from his days as the Chief of Police, but I think that one time there was 19 administrators from the Los Angeles Police Department as chiefs in Southern California or the Western United States at one time. It was a really, I think you led the way when you went to Beverly Hills, but there was someone in Torrance, someone in Long Beach, someone all over, even in Montana. So it's a credit to Los Angeles Police Department that created the opportunity for you to serve another community. I also wanted to thank you, too, for the joint work you do with Los Angeles, especially in Hollywood Division and West Hollywood, the sheriffs, and Beverly Hills and Culver City on some of the similar traffic and also crime problems that sometimes occur. And congratulations to Beverly Hills, it's their laws, but you served them greatly. But the one thing I do like to say about Beverly Hills, that I'm very proud to say, you could fit all the Beverly Hills, the great town of Beverly Hills, into the greatest urban park in the world, Griffith Park. We're bigger than little old Beverly Hills. Thank you very much, Chief.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Parks, thank you for doing this today. And Chief, we haven't had the chance to work together, but I wanted to also say congratulations to you. And I just wanted to find out, one of the things that we all know chiefs of police have to kind of deal with is, you know, things come up every day in the course of just doing businesses, a law enforcement agency, and you sometimes catch the sort of strange dynamics that happen on the other side of life. And there's probably no city that would have better reading material than your book on what you've seen in Beverly Hills and the sort of Crime Line to the Stars or something like that. So I just want to get your first copy when it comes out, and I'd love to get it. So anyway, congratulations, and you've set some big shoes for your predecessor to fall in. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much.
Yes, if I may, I'd like to introduce my wife of nearly 50 years, Patricia, and people who made me successful in Beverly Hills, one of whom is Captain Ed Crines, Lieutenant Mitch McCann, Suzanne Harmon, Garble Moe, and I'll just say her first name, Arda. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. This concludes presentations for today's meeting. Mr. Kirk, Ms. Zakowski.
Ask forthwith on number nine.
Forthwith on item number, that has been sent forthwith. Mr. Kirk, next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take item 27 at this time?
Mr. Garcetti, are we ready on item 27? We recognize Mr. Garcetti first.
Mr. President, amending motions 27A, B, and C have been distributed to all members.
Okay, I'll call your attention to those items, colleagues. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for all the hard work on this year's consolidated plan. Each year, for those of you who may not follow the consolidated plan, the city, the federal monies it has for housing, it has for block grants to help spur community development projects and economic development projects throughout the city, as well as a couple other smaller funds moves forward together at this time of year. This reflects tremendous work on part of this council in order to try to look at some of the ongoing costs that we've had and to try to cobble away some of those ongoing costs for more catalytic projects. It also reflects the unfortunate loss of a waiver that we've had for a decade, which allowed us to provide community services, 25% of the money we got in community services, unique to our city. And the federal government told us for about four years, this was the last year, this is the last year, and this year, indeed, it was the last year that we were able to spend 25%, and it's down to 15. So there have been some tough cuts, cuts that nobody likes to stomach, some cuts in areas of homeless services, some cuts in other areas where these agencies do no longer qualify. But we've been able to do, I think, more with less. We have been able in this as well to give council members, the mayor, the ability to really spur catalytic projects in their neighborhoods. And I think as we've each looked through our own districts in the sort of projects that you have brought from the community forward, we really have a tremendous opportunity here. A second part of this, too, and we heard loud and clear, and I know there are many public speaker cards, since we've had so much public testimony, we won't be able to get to all these today, but we'll get to some. And I want to thank specifically the folks from the Handy Worker Program, Home Secure Program as well, and those who spoke out, making sure that we keep the URB, the Urgent Repair Program. And working closely with you, we were able to protect those programs, to keep them at the same strength we're keeping all the programs at. And it was testament to your political drive, your testimony, the many trips that you took to City Hall to make sure that all of this city recognized that this was important as a citywide project that resulted in this being put back in today. And thank you as well to council members for their help on that. We also want to thank the Citizens Unit for participation. I know Pete Last and some other folks are here from the CUP for their testimony and their great help with making sure that the consolidated plan got out there in the community and was able to get community input. I think we agreed with 99% of the recommendations the CUP put forward as well. And this, colleagues, today will allow us to move forward in two areas that I think are important to this city. One is to continue to bring economic development in a strategic way to the city to fight poverty. That's what these dollars are for, and the longer that we keep them just in ongoing programs and we don't have the ability to be entrepreneurial with them, we lose the chance to turn around neighborhoods, and we'll do that. And the second piece is to keep our ongoing commitment to housing. And I know there's many of you who didn't testify in committee, and we're gonna hear a little bit from you about the Housing Trust Fund. And we're working out to make sure that we have that obligation going into the Housing Trust Fund that has been so successful in leveraging the construction of workforce housing to keep our economy strong and to make sure that people have a place to live that is decent, that is safe, and that is affordable. So I would move, Mr. President, that we open up for 15 minutes of public comment. I'm gonna ask one person, I'm gonna be taking the president's chair, I'm gonna ask one person, and I know that's very few, to speak from the Handy Worker Program. I know there are many of you that are here, but because of time and the 60 cards that are here, I'm gonna ask you, maybe if you can talk to yourselves about a single person coming up and representing, we've been able to restore that program, so I think there is, should not be any controversy on that. And then I'm gonna call on some folks who are here to speak about the housing component, the Housing Trust Fund, and we're gonna be, just keeping that to 15 minutes. So I would ask people to be as brief as possible, and I would make that motion right now, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti. Is there any objection to reopening the public hearing for a time period of 15 minutes? If not, let's go ahead and do that. I'll ask the clerks assistance in putting up a 15-minute clock. Well, let's do a 10-minute and a 5-minute, how's that? And members, so you know you're not being ignored, we do have Ms. Gruel, Ms. Zakowski, Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Vieragosa, and Mr. Reyes on the queue to be heard at the conclusion of a public comment on this item. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I'd like to call forward this time Mindy Meyer from our Cup, Jan Brydenbach, and Lisa Snyder.
My name is Mindy Meyer, and I'm the Vice President of the Citizens Unit for Participation for Housing and Community Development. I'm also here with Peter Lass and one of my other colleagues, Candido Maras, is right over here. And as you may know, we are the advisory board for the consolidated plan that is made up of representatives which are appointed by the city council members as well as the mayor's office. If you've not yet made appointments to this board, I encourage you to do so. I am here today acting as your representative and sharing with you concerns that we have heard from your constituents. And I'm now handing you, Peter is going to give you, public comments that were made at the eight public meetings we held throughout the city and documentation that underlines points that will follow. The Cup board unanimously voted to support the consolidated plan. We appreciate all the hard work that went into putting it together, and thank you for fully funding the Handy Worker Program. However, we did separate out two items that we requested not be funded, and those are the PACE program. Our board has been hearing community complaints from different communities regarding the PACE program since 2001. Some of these complaints are that PACE is introduced into community in a way that incites fear, there is often a lack of coordination between resources that address the citations that are being issued, and this adversely affects senior citizens, disabled people, low-income people, owner residents that are property-rich and cash-poor, those of fixed income, and people who are unable to navigate the system. I have specific things to cite, but in the interest of time, I won't, but my phone number is there in case you have further questions. We have people who sold their property rather than deal with PACE, who blatantly says that people who fail to comply may be fined up to $1,000 and/or six months in jail. And in my neighborhood, Oakwood, we had a case where a 91-year-old blind man was fined $500. CDBG money that we get because of our poverty level is with the intent of lifting people out of poverty, and this money should not be used to persecute the poor. When we do use federal funds for code violations, we need to make sure that the proper resources go hand in hand, and right now that is not happening. In a year where the majority of programs are sustaining cuts, PACE is being fully funded and is receiving $300,000 more than it received in 2001. The Cup asks for more stringent oversight of the PACE program in 2001, and now, in 2004, we are still hearing complaints from different communities, CD1, CD6, CD13. Therefore, we implore you to please, number one, aggressively ensure that this program receives stricter oversight, two, that proper coordination exists and its coordination is targeted to making sure that resources address citations issued, and three, that we create an Alms Budsmann to serve to assist people, especially owner residents that are cited. Cup hopes to meet with Councilman Garcetti's office and hopefully with PACE as well. The mayor's office has said that they will help, and we ask for your support in guaranteeing that this $2 million-plus program be used, that is being used to eliminate blight, at least acts to build up the community and not tear down the people who are in the greatest need. We have faith that this program can work, but we think some other things need to be done. Again, I'd like to let you know that I am here as your representative, and it would be negligent for us to not share these concerns from the community. I'd like to acknowledge Ye Cornell from Mayor's Office and Laura Ito from CDD for helping keep us abreast of the swiftly moving process, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jan Brydenbach, and I was the founder of a campaign called Housing LA. Housing LA was started over six years ago, and the purpose of that campaign was to build support and establish a Housing Trust Fund in the city of Los Angeles. We did it, obviously, because we have a housing crisis in this city. We know that, I won't go into the details. During the course of that campaign, and by the time the trust fund was actually established, it had received unanimous support. There was no major organized opposition to the establishment of a trust fund in Los Angeles. It had the support of this administration, it had the support of people on this council who used the trust fund in their own campaign pledges. They made support a high priority. When you came into the council, you voted to establish the trust fund. In the last two years, you have voted unanimously to support it, and for that, we thank you. We did that trust fund, obviously, because there's a housing crisis, but we did a trust fund for another reason. We did it because by definition, trust funds are sequestered funds. No matter where you decide to get the funds, from a fee, from a dedicated source, from taking money from someplace else, from imposing a new fee, or taking it from the general fund, there are many places you can get the money that you put in any kind of trust fund. But once you put it there, it is sequestered. That's the point of the trust fund, that we don't have to come back time and time again and argue and pretend that the trust fund is nothing more than a pond to go fishing in to meet other needs, as important as those other needs may be. We're facing hard times. We have faced them before, we'll face them again. I've been an organizer for 30 years, and I've seen recessions and I've seen good times. And I know that what the hard times do is they make leadership face up to a lot of hard choices. The leadership that we have, those of us who work in the community, have to keep faith with the people who trust us in the community. Those of us who are elected have to keep faith. We have to keep faith with our campaign promises, we have to keep faith with the votes that we've made, we have to keep faith where we have, people have placed their trust, we have to keep faith with the trust fund. There is now a proposal to take out almost $10 million from this year's trust fund. We understand the difficulties facing those proposals, but the trust fund was created in order to sequester the money for a specific purpose. We did not spend all those years in creating a national model. When we go to conferences all over this nation, we hear about the leadership of Los Angeles. There is no municipality in the country that has talked about more than Los Angeles when it comes to housing. To walk away and to break faith with the commitment that this leadership in this city has made to sequestering Housing Trust Funds is to break faith with the people who trusted us. Please do not do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa Snyder.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Snyder. I'm the Director of Housing LA at SCAMF, and I'm here just to say a few words on the trust fund. Obviously, number one, we want to maintain the full $9.6 million of general fund money for the trust fund. We understand the critical nature of the housing, excuse me, the budget crisis that we're in right now, but it's our contention that shortchanging housing at this point is only going to exacerbate the budget woes that we face. Specifically, we will lose millions and millions of dollars of leveraging money from Prop 46, which we will not be able to get back. We'll have more people on the streets, we'll have longer commutes, more traffic, more air pollution, that equals increased health costs, and that's just to name a few examples. As such, we urge the city to establish housing as a priority for any money that may come back to the city, and also to begin the process of identifying and establishing permanent dedicated sources for the trust fund. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call forward. Is there one person from the Handy Worker Program who might be able to come forward and speak at this time, if they just would come forward and then identify themselves to the record? And I'm going to make sure that all the cards are in the record as well. And if all the folks from the Handy Worker Program maybe want to stand with them, you can show this council just how strong and what great work you've done.
My name is Matthew Cousin, and we represent the service providers of the Handy Worker Program. What we do in the city, you're very well aware, but we do make a difference. We save lives and we increase the quality of life for our seniors and those with disabilities. But what you see behind me here is the difference that you made in your decision to allow this funding to be placed. We have Lilian from the Great Panthers here, we have service providers who strive for excellence each and every day. We service over 10,000 families every two years. We make a difference in the community like no kidding, we make a difference. We put the word neighbor back in where some of us call it the hood. We increase the safety of getting in and out of a home. But what I really want to acknowledge is the committee's ability to establish a forum where we can come in and be heard. This is new to a lot of us. All we do is actually what we do every day, and I want to acknowledge the committee, the city council, for allowing this to happen, and we're looking forward to doing this again in the future, and to be involved in making decisions. There's so much to be said, but I think the best thing to say right now is just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate all your great work that you do, not only here politically, but the actual work that you do there in the community to improve people's lives. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much all for coming in and being so patient. We have a few minutes left as well. Why don't we call Darian Hamani, board, Hamari? Excuse me.
Good morning, members of the city council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. I'm here to represent the homeless population, homeless single mothers with children. I understand the indisputable fact that we do have to face budget cuts, and that's something that we can't avoid. However, I'm here to emphasize the fact that budget cuts, if possible, cannot be imposed upon the homeless people currently. As the jobless rate increases, as we have less support for child support orders and the collection of child support funds, what I've seen in my experience as a homeless mother is the increase of the homeless population due to some of these facts. So I'm here to ask the city council to consider, in your budget-cutting process, that any budget cuts that would be imposed upon the homeless population would not only exacerbate the problem, but it would also give less opportunity for job training, it would be given less opportunity for self-sufficiency and for the ending of the homeless situation for mothers, for veterans, for families. It would provide less access to appointments for medical care for the seniors and the disabled, and that would, of course, lead to more problems. So while we're cutting what we have to cut, we have to be very cautious and make sure that we don't, in the end, increase the monies that will be needed to be spent upon things that could be looked at and handled now. There are many options that we could look at and many things that could be done instead of cutting or instead of eliminating programs. One of the other things that would happen is, as I said, less access for people who are homeless to break their own cycle of poverty. Many women who are currently receiving AFDC and their children are receiving AFDC do not want to see themselves on AFDC, but if programs are cut, if opportunities are taken away from them, then they will not have the opportunity to break that cycle. We're looking at currently also eventually cutting the TANF programs, the Medi-Cal programs, and the food stamp programs. That being the case, we have to make sure that these families are supported during this process so that when the time comes for those programs to be eliminated, that these families have the opportunity to re-enter mainstream America and become productive, constructive citizens. I just hope that when you are cutting what you have to cut, that you bear those things in mind. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. We have a great deal of cards from Los Angeles Family Housing. I'd like to call the entire group up, and you can determine a few people to speak if you'd like, but the folks are Richard Arpad, Molly McCann, oh, sorry, McMahon, James Shambless, Dean Hutchings, Victoria Grinnell, Rosa Camillo, Mano Robles, Milana Renali, Johnny Vargas, James McCartney, John Horn, Bill Powers, Raquel Cataldo, Terry Downing, Michael Greenbaum, Carrie King, Rose Marie Larson, Virginia Baloo, and Cindy Arana Lachuga. I'm sure there's others as well, but maybe a couple people could give a little bit of testimony, and we appreciate all of you being here today.
Good morning. My name is John Horn. I'm the Director of Programs for LA Family Housing, and we brought down people today from all three of our shelter programs that will be affected by the cuts that are being proposed in the budget. And what we're here to say is that we cannot afford these cuts, not just for our shelter program, but for all shelter programs that exist in the city. But I'd like to just turn it over to a few of our clients and let you hear directly from them, so.
I'm Dean Hutchings. I'm a senior, I'm an actor by trade, but for some reason, I'm homeless. My state of being was that I'm homeless. I had mental issues. I'm also, my legs are going, I'm almost 60 years old. I need the LA shelter right now. It's helping me, otherwise I'd be in the street with nothing, indigent. I'm very grateful to speak on this behalf of this organization of LA Family Housing. They help us, they help other people, they help families, they help single adults, single women, women with children, and other people. We need this LA family housing. It's the only thing in the valley that is helping other people. It's Cornerstone, which is a mental institution that helps seniors. I am a senior, I need help. I'm reaching out to all of you in the council to help me and help others. I'm speaking on behalf of seniors, and I'm of single men, and of women, and of people with children. We need help. Please help us, and don't cut our funds because it's back-to-work programs that they're doing, also different programs they're helping, and thank you.
Thank you. We have another speaker.
Good morning, and thank you for everyone who gave us a chance to come and talk about from LA Housing Authorities, who is like an angelic network. Why am I here to thank the council? Because I have a congestive heart failure, and if I be on the streets, I have no chance to be surviving and have a life. And I don't want any bed. I heard that 12 beds is going to be cut off our budget. I don't think anyone wants to cut off my life. That's just like giving me a poison, giving me something to die, not having a hope. January 10th, I was almost died because of a heart attack. But LA Housing, who has a great program and an angelic network, gave me a chance to have a hope. And I think everyone in this council have to hear what people, homeless people, have to tell you about. How sad would that be for 12 people? That means 12, six months, you can add that. How many people get a chance to have three times a meal, programs that can help you to go on with your lives and help other people? I really thank you, and I hope that council will have this testimony, and you open a window for our lives, that God will open a door for your lives and progress. God bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Maybe we could have one more speaker from Los Angeles Family Housing. Please, sir.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Mark Hall. Please understand that these people and many others have fallen on hard times. The shelters have saved these people's lives. You all also, believe it or not, could fall on hard times and depend on the shelter. No one is different. We're all the same. I will make this very short. Please, once again, understand that these shelters are needed, and there's people out there that have died on the streets, that still don't even know about the shelter. More help is needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask if we can have that be the last speaker from Los Angeles Family Housing.
Mi nombre es Guadalupe. Yo vivo en Cherna House, que ahora se llama Comunidad Cesar Chavez. Sin programas como este, yo mi familia estuviéramos en la calle. Este programa ayuda mucho a nuestras familias desamparadas. Gracias.
Thank you all very much, and we appreciate all of you being here today and your testimony. Let me call Bob Erlandbusch up, and Dennis O'Sullivan. And if one of the three folks from Wimpen's Care Cottage would like to step forward as well, either Casey Horan, Rachel Rainforth, or Fabiola Sandoval, one of you if you could speak to. Bob, please.
Thank you. On behalf of the people behind me from LA Family Housing and the thousands and thousands of people on the streets today, the 13% cuts that you're proposing to homeless funds would, over the period of a year, create a half a million bed nights that would not be filled. A half a million bed nights. Several of you are on the Bring Los Angeles Home, the Partnership to End Homelessness Blue Ribbon Committee. And I know Councilmember Garcetti, Wendy Grule, Antonio Vieragosa, Jan Perry are on. Jan Perry are on that committee, and several of you have already stepped up to be on the Funding Task Force to look at how to leverage funds locally, state, and federal. We will make a major mistake while we are simultaneously trying to plan, a strategic plan to end homelessness in the next decade, at the same time, cutting homeless funds. What message does that send to the state? What message does that send to the federal government? The message that it says is, if you don't believe in your own plan, how can you leverage state and federal funds? We cannot do that. Councilmember Perry, as well as Councilmember Garcetti, in conjunction with the mayor's office, is providing leadership to stop these cuts and to restore, in whole, the homeless funds in the city of LA. And I would ask the remaining City Council members to join their leadership to end homelessness for not only the people behind me, but the 80,000 other people on the streets every day and every evening in the County of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis O'Sullivan, and one of the representatives from Women's Care Cottage? Is Dennis here? Okay. We have one of the three women from Women's Care Cottage step forward. One of the three of you ready to? Go ahead. Please.
My name is Casey Haran, and I'm the Executive Director at Women's Care Cottage. And we join all the providers in the city of Los Angeles to vehemently oppose the 13% cutbacks that have been proposed. As I know, as we know, the City Council is deeply committed to ending homelessness, and we have great leadership on the council. We are the nation's leader, the epicenter of homelessness in the nation, and yet our commitment of local funds represents a fraction of those committed, not only in major cities, but in small cities. The reason that we have 80,000 people on the streets every night is because of the scarcity of service and because of the lack of money. We know how to prevent homelessness in LA, and we know how to end homelessness, and we, all of the providers, have among the highest success rates we have ever achieved. Yet we're turning people away day in and day out. Women's Care Cottage is a small agency. We do very little promotion and outreach now, and we turn away 750 women and children each month. It's devastating to their lives. Earlier, a speaker was talking about pain management, and she used the expression "sanctioned torture," which is really what women and children endure when they're living in their cars and on the streets. The city and the county are investing resources to punish and criminalize people who are homeless, and we ask that instead, you devote resources and you grow the budget, you do not cut back, and you invest money in ending homelessness among women, men, and children, and that we no longer manage this crisis, but that we end homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all the representatives of the Women's Care Cottage for your understanding. We have a couple more speaker cards. We're over the time, but I'd like to just call on two more, Judy Alexander and Bill Wilson. We also had Guadalupe Gadaibi, Bonnie Roth, Michael Pace, and Shashi Hunneman. And my apologies that we're not going to be able to get to those last three, but if those two folks would like to come forward, Judy Alexander, and Judy is not, and then Bill Wilson. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you all. My name is Bill Wilson. I'm with Covenant House California, and I'm here to lend my voice to the opposition against the 13% cuts. Covenant House California serves homeless youth in the city of Hollywood. We provide emergency transitional housing, medical care, mental health services, employment, education, and vocational services. Each night in the city of Hollywood, it's estimated that there's 2,000 to 3,000 young people without a home, living in abandoned buildings, eating from dumpsters, panhandling in front of businesses. These cuts would have a devastating impact to all homeless individuals, especially the young people who live on the streets in Hollywood and the greater Los Angeles area. We therefore urge you and implore you to restore these cuts. Otherwise, the long-term cost to the public mental health system, public healthcare system, and the justice system will far outweigh the savings incurred here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the good work of Covenant House, too. This completes our public comment period. We will now return to discussion from the council. Again, thank you to everybody for your understanding today. I know this was the last of many public hearings we had, and we will no doubt address many of the concerns that were brought up here. I'd like to call on Councilmember Grul to be our first speaker. Councilmember Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and I want to start with saying, good work. I know you and the rest of your committee had many, 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 many meetings to discuss this, and your leadership was really critical in coming up with something that, although does not do everything we would like, you had a balanced approach, and I just want to say thank you. And this process was one that, I think, for me, allowed us also, and those of us that represent various parts of the city, to ensure fair share for all of that and to take the indicators into consideration in doing so. Also want to compliment you on something that we worked on together when I was on the committee, which was relative to ensuring that we had input by the community prior to the consolidated plan being developed, so that it wasn't a fait accompli by the time it came to the council and to the mayor. They had the input from so many of those community leaders that are here. I just want to address three issues very, very quickly. One, you've heard from many of the individuals here, Bob Erlinbush and the group from the homeless providers, and the importance of the emergency shelter and other programs, and that although, I think it was an originally 25% cut, went down to 13%. For them, 13% is still almost 169 beds. And this last year, we were able to provide emergency shelter year-round. That ends at the, I don't know if it's beginning of March, sometime in March, that we're not going to be able to do that anymore without identifying some funds. Mr. Garcetti and myself and Ms. Perry serve on Bring LA Home, the homeless group. There's about, gosh, I think 50 of us that are serving together to try to come up with a plan to end homelessness. And I think it's critical that we work together and help identify some of those funds that were cut in this process, because we are that safety net for so many homeless individuals and families. And I offered the other day, as part of our Bring LA Home, to serve on a funding committee, which Mayor Hahn proposed at our last meeting, and will continue to do that, and I hope all of you around this room will similarly look everywhere we can to ensure that we leverage those federal dollars. And that's one of the things that we're concerned about, is that those dollars, potentially, if we don't provide the funding, we will lose a similar amount on the federal level. The other item I wanted to talk about was specifically relative to childcare and having access to quality childcare. I want to thank the committee as well. They identified a million dollars of the community development resources to spend on the construction of childcare facilities, and doing that with the housing, as well as working very closely with the Prop 5 Commission. We have the opportunity, there are $600 million that has been allocated under Prop 5 for childcare facilities, and it's particularly, they provide the services, the hardest dollars to usually find for a program. We'd like to leverage those dollars, and the committee was willing, at our request, to include a million dollars as a priority. I also want to mention that the other item, which was Handy Worker, which you saw so many people here today, and I can attest to a couple things. One, they are great advocates. Two, they do a wonderful service for seniors in our communities. It is an extraordinary program, and I am so happy that we could identify the funding citywide. I had made the commitment, regardless of that, that I was going to fund it, in my district, particularly in those providers, because it is something our seniors depend on. So I just wanted to stand today and say, we are investing in our children and our future by adding funds or priorities for childcare, that we need to address the issue of homelessness and ensure that we can find some of those additional funds. And lastly, the importance of the Handy Worker Program and the process we went through this time, which Eric and myself and others worked on last year, ensuring public participation in that decision-making, and having the CUP members who have been so active. So thank you again, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Appreciate it very much, and thank you for your leadership. Our next speaker is Councilmember Ludlow. Mr. Ludlow. Okay. All right. Why don't we hold him on table, and Mr. Vierogosa is our next speaker.
I, too, want to thank the chairman, Chair Garcetti, for his work in crafting this proposal. It's not one that I frankly feel great about. It's nothing to brag home to mother about, but it was the best that we could do under the circumstances. I do believe that you did a great job, Councilmember Garcetti, in trying to address some of the real critical needs. One of them was the issue that we heard from, the Handy Worker Program. The idea that it wouldn't be obligatory citywide was, to me, unconscionable in a city with so much dilapidated housing, with a need, especially among our seniors, to do something with the track record of the Handy Worker Program in this city. The idea that we would abandon that program as a citywide obligation was something that just was unacceptable, and the fact that you were able to come up with a compromise here and ensure that this program will be obligatory, I think, is very, very important. And as someone said, I think, very, very well, this program puts the neighbor back in the hood, and that's something that is essential. We've been working with this Handy Worker Program in our Day of Services, where we try to revitalize our neighbors' neighborhoods, and to the extent that they've been a critical component of that, I want to acknowledge them. And I also want to say something about the homeless advocates who are here. You know, it's interesting, and this is the epicenter of the homeless community, anywhere in the nation, in a city, as I've said before, that has been ranked as one of the meanest cities with respect to what we do for the homeless, because it's not what we say, it's what we do. It seems to me that this goes in the wrong direction. I understand that there are federal requirements here. I do hope that this city will pass a resolution opposing those federal requirements. We need a 25% public services cap, not a 15% one, and we've got to do everything possible to convince the federal government that this is the wrong way to go in this city. If you want to do it in other cities, fine. I don't think it makes sense, but here, it's absolutely the wrong way to go. One could argue, we could lift that cap even higher, and so I thank you for your work. I do think, though, that we're going to have to think through some issues. One of them is what we do currently with CRA housing money, and how we can ensure that that money is in a housing trust fund to leverage in a way that we maximize our dollars and really commit to the rhetoric that we are a city with $100 million trust fund. So I thank you, Chairman Garcetti, for your leadership. I know this was tough work, given these economic times, and given the fact that there were some that didn't believe that these programs were important enough in these times, but you certainly moved this ahead. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vierogosa, and thank you for the kind words. Like to recognize Mr. Reyes next. Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to echo many of the thoughts, and thanks to our chairman of the committee, Councilmember Garcetti, and all the hard work of all the members of the committee. It's heartbreaking when you're sitting and listening and growing up in these neighborhoods to see the hardships of our neighbors and those who truly are in a position to get to that next level but just can't, for all these different reasons that we heard hour after hour, and to see the strain on the administrators and the folks who manage and deliver the service. You could just see it in their eyes, just what horrors are before them if certain dollars don't come in. The sad part about it is that if the state continues in its direction, if the city continues to cut down to the bone the way it has to, just to maintain basic services, then the future is going to be that much tougher, which means we have to be sharper in how we create these alternatives. It just means that the city family, the department heads, and the folks who are in a position to create revenue in the city needs to be that much more aggressive because of the need we have in our city. But quite frankly, there are services out there that we need to fund. For example, we have a PACE program. This PACE program is to help us find those structures that are dilapidated, those landlords who choose to abuse people. We need to change the life of these children and families who do not have a voice, but landlords need to be accountable. It is not for us to go after seniors or to go after the families who are barely making it, it's not to be punitive to those R1 single residential areas in the district. It's about multiple units, it's about apartments, it's about those landlords who choose to abuse the family and children in our district. So those are the kinds of challenges we have before us. I want to thank the department for all their hard work, the mayor's office for the collaboration, and as we seek to find other ways to generate revenues, we're with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Like to call on Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to commend you for all the work you've done on this item, because it has not been an easy task to separate a great number of priorities. But one of the things I think was so important throughout the process is that we all learned a great deal more about Handy Worker and Home Secure and what the importance, and we really appreciate those who came in to let us know the importance of it. I think in looking at this issue, particularly with the reduction of the 25% cap, we've probably done the best that we can. We could probably quibble over a line here and a line there, but it is, I think, a proposal for the 30th year that gives the best balance for every district as it relates to both citywide and discretionary. So one thing I would like to do, as we've gone through that and we've proposed a Amendment 27A that clean up some language just as it relates to a cleaner swap of money for LA Best, and hopefully that amendment will pass so that we can have a better process as it relates to tracking the money. Also, that for District H discretionary funding, I'd make a verbal motion that we move that $86,824 to the, in our discretionary account, to the Hoover Redevelopment Area Streets Gate project, so that we can assist in funding that. The final motion I'd make is that, and I realize the balance between the general fund and addressing the Fund for Housing is always going to be tenuous at best. In the committee, we discussed up to 9.6 million for the Affordable Housing Fund, Item 28 on the report. When we evaluate what's going on on the general fund, where we could be as much as $30 to $50 million to hold this year and approaching over $200 million in next year, we are really cash short as it relates to the general fund, and I'd make a verbal motion that up to 9.6 be moved to $4 million, so that we can assess the impact, particularly after March 2nd, and that if we move forward to the end of the year, that we can always come back and reevaluate what is going on in the housing. But the hold in the general fund is significant and even more important as we look at additional services within the city of Los Angeles. So I'd move that we make that change, so that we send a commitment or a real strong commitment to the housing community that almost 16 million will be in the housing fund. That is 6 million above the 10 that was requested during the committee meetings, and so we have shown a significantly higher commitment of 6 million, but certainly removing or not allocating another 5 million out of the general fund would be helpful on both accounts. And so I'd move that we make that change, so that we can balance and make sure we have both budgets in order, and that we're in shape to reevaluate this sometime in the future.
Is there a second on that?
Second by Mr. Smith.
I'm against that. I don't think that's in our best interest to reduce that by $5 million. I think that's the wrong thing to do today. And if you think that there are funds that can, from the Housing Department, that can make up that, I've been told that we can't use some of the home dollars they're getting for homeownership like we can from the General Fund. And homeownership is an issue that I particularly am interested in, particularly in some of our housing projects, where we're looking to redevelop those and give people opportunities to own their own home. And I know we're in a tough budget crisis, but there's nothing that improves a neighborhood or a city as much as getting more people the opportunity to own their own home. So, if we could have the new General Manager of the Housing Department come and explain, come up and explain how reducing $5 million from the General Fund to go into the Housing Trust Fund impacts what you're trying to do.
Please sit at the desk. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Edesmar. I'm the General Manager of the Housing Department. The issue really has to do with the kind of dollars that we use. Home dollars, which come to the Housing Department from the federal government and stay with the Housing Department, because they can only be used for housing, also have very strict standards, particularly income restrictions, which means that home dollars and any project attached to home dollars can only benefit those that are at 80% of the median of income. That has a particular effect on homeownership, because our inventory is so expensive in the city. We have many people that are qualified under the program, but none of the inventory that meets 80% of median income. So, we essentially can't help them buy a home, because there's no home they can afford. To the extent that we can use either General Fund dollars or some CDBG dollars for that, that permits us to rise up to 120% of median income, which then does exist within our inventory of housing in the City of L.A. to have those buyers qualify for a home. So, it's not just an issue of how much money, it's what kind of money is it. And that home restriction applies whether we're doing multifamily rental housing or we're doing homeownership. That extends across the board. I hope that answers your question.
So, reducing the General Fund dollars is...
It restricts, in like measure, the ability for homeownership.
And you can't make that up.
No, I can't make that up, because home dollars don't...
So, colleagues, I'm against that one verbal amendment that you introduced, and so if we could vote on that separately, I'd appreciate that. The other ones I'm okay with, but I can't support that.
Any objection to voting on it separately when it comes time to vote? No objections? Ms. Han, are you done? Okay.
Just a point of information there as well. You may, Mr. Parks, want to separate out that element of what you were talking about from the rest of what you were talking about orally, and then we can vote on those two separately. So, for instance, the reprogramming, which I'm very strongly supportive of within your own district.
I'll separate the one motion that I had separate is that we, in writing, that we sent around, is the motion for changing the allocation for LA Best. The second motion dealt with discretionary reprogramming, and the third motion dealt with reducing the $9.6 to $4.
Okay. So, those first two are friendly amendments.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I'd like to hear from Mr. Deaton. Mr. Deaton, would you come forward, please? The city made a commitment, or the Mayor made a commitment, at least in his budget and his presentation, that we wanted to spend $10 million on housing. Is that correct?
Right.
And we're going to put in how much, under Mr. Parks's proposal?
Would be $4.
$4, plus the additional funding source that the General Manager mentioned, but which is much more restricted uses.
Right. I think...
Ms. Han?
Councilman, originally, the Housing Department came in to committee a couple of weeks ago requesting $10 million. Our understanding was that there was approximately $5.7 that was identified that was available, and the attempt was tried, to try to fill the gap between $5.7 and $10. Subsequent to that discussion, the Housing Department did identify these more restrictive home funds that they plan on making available. So, that would bring it up to $11.7. Housing Department now indicates that they would like to get to $15, which is where the $4 million came from. This does not take the money out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There is still $5.6 left. But bear in mind that we do have some various serious financial problems to deal with, not only between now and the end of the fiscal year, but certainly at the beginning of July.
And I think that's the final, really important and salient point of this, is we really don't know where we're at. We know, right now, we're at least $30 million short on this year's budget.
I believe it was closer to $47.
$47. Okay, it's gone up then. As we talk, it goes up. The point is, is we keep slipping further behind as this year has progressed. We've had additional losses from Sacramento, twice now. We've had budget problems within the Police Department. We kept slipping further and further behind. We have no cushion left to transfer into next year's budget, like we've done historically for decades here. There is going to be zero money to transfer over from this year's budget to next year's budget. We start next year virtually with zero, and we keep talking about spending more and more money. The commitment is important, but if, we have to use more restrictive funds to make the commitment, that may be the prudent thing to do, because we can always come back, Ms. Han, and later on, add that back in. If, you know what, the budget works out better if, on March 2nd, the bond in Sacramento passes, the state of California doesn't whammy us as hard as we're thinking they may, we always have the ability to go back and add that back in. Right now, we have to be very, very fiscally prudent. And that was what we talked about when we did the firefighters raises recently. We have to be careful. We have the reopener clause in there. We have to be very careful. There's a very tenuous moment right now in the city's finances, and we cannot afford to be risky. And I think what Mr. Parks done is gives us an opportunity to continue the commitment to housing without getting too risky.
Okay. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to address a couple of things that were said in public comment, because I was sitting in the President's chair, and I wanted to say something about the homeless funding. And Mr. Vierogosa hit this as well before. We fell victim to, as I mentioned in the opening comments, the 25% waiver no longer being there, so we can only spend 15%. We are still ahead of the game from where we were two years ago. That's not of any consolation when beds are lost. We are still going to be moving this year to figure out a way to keep what was last year, historic year, because we went from three-month wet weather, cold weather shelters to year-round ones. And I can assure you today that we will redouble our efforts, especially as we look at things like our loan securitization and growing the Housing Trust Fund, at how we can continue to add more of our dollars to the problem of homelessness and solving that. I want you to hear that loud and clear today. I know that my colleagues support that. We won't be able to resolve it in this consolidated plan, simply because the community groups who give the money out no longer can all qualify. This is a federal requirement, like Mr. Vierogosa said. We have to change that law. And there is one other city, I believe, Chicago, I think, that has a permanent waiver. Ours was a temporary one, and we should be looking at that in the future years. But know that we will not rest this year until we figure out a way to continue to expand the number of beds, both for emergency shelters, for regular shelters, and transitional housing, as we construct the affordable housing, too, that saves people from falling into homelessness in the social safety net. So, I just wanted to address that very loud and clear.
Mr. Vierogosa.
Mr. President, members, you know, I've heard a lot of talk, and sometimes it sounds too much like rhetoric about a commitment in the city to the Housing Trust Fund. You know, you look at this city and you see the traffic patterns, and what I say, not only now as the Chair of Transportation, but I've said for some time, you want to do something about traffic in Los Angeles, bring housing closer to jobs. It's not rocket science. You know, left-hand circles, left-hand turning signals that work on demand are important, but the most important thing we could do is to rethink what this city could look like in a city that's going to grow exponentially in the next 20 years. This commitment to the $100 million trust fund is a commitment that we've all said, that we share, and that we're going to make an absolute priority. Let me make, however, a business argument for why this money's important. You know, when you cut, we don't just cut blindly. We don't just cut across the board. In fact, we have done that from time to time, but we shouldn't. You look at revenue generators. You look at job creators. You look at industries that we could support, for instance, that bring us jobs. We're looking at a trust fund that it's not only going to help us deal with the housing crunch that we face, address the homeless situation, the affordable housing situation, where a firefighter, a cop, a teacher, a librarian can't buy a home in Los Angeles. They have to move to Palmdale to do it. It seems to me that what we're forgetting here is that when you put these monies in the trust fund, when you put them to work in the city, you're creating jobs, you're creating economic development, you're uplifting cities in a way that you can't just look at from a bottom-line dollars and cents. Because if you're going to do that, you've got to tell the rest of the story. And the rest of the story is this money can be used to be as an engine for the city, as an engine for jobs, and as an engine for economic development. In addition to that, we know that when you put it in the trust fund, it can leverage money from the federal government and from the state. And to the extent that we're not thinking strategically, trying to leverage every dollar we can, we're not learning from the mistakes of the past here in this city. And I can tell you that if someone used to watch this city, not take advantage of the state and federal opportunities to leverage local dollars. So, I can't, at this point, support this proposal. I agree with Councilmember Han that we have to protect this corpus of money right now. We have to ensure that, not only that we're protecting affordable housing, but that we're creating more opportunities for homeownership. Because we know that homeownership is the anchor for every neighborhood, for revitalizing it, and for making sure that L.A. is growing together.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to agree with Mr. Vierogosa that, yes, those things are important, but I think we also have to realize that homeownership without street pavement, without sidewalk repair, we spent just $7 million citywide on sidewalk repair for the whole 15 districts. We're talking about $5 million today. It equates to maybe 50 police officers that you can hire or not lay off. It equates to 50 firefighters you can hire or not lay off. And so, the issue is, is that in the context of the larger $5 billion budget, in my judgment, we should be making these types of decisions, not making a incremental decision on housing and then find out later, we don't have the resources to put police cars, fix lights, fix streets, repair our own communities, but yet we're promoting a homeownership over those people that live in the community that may not be getting the service that we have now. We've already cut back $53 million in services based on the last hit we took from Sacramento. And these are the, in many of our communities, the poorer communities, they suffer the most, because they have the older streets, the older sidewalks. And so, I would say that it's an issue in which the Housing Committee addressed a $10 million request. The fund is up to $16 million. We've done more than what was asked for. To hold back $5 million in the General Fund appears to be wise, because it's the most discretionary money that we have. It's the money that we can ensure that the overall safety of the city, the overall cleanliness environment of the city is dealt with, as opposed to just one unique item. And I would strongly suggest that we think the long term on our General Fund budget and what impact it makes on the 4 million people that voted us in office and asked, what is the best use and when is the best deliberation for that money, as opposed to pigeonholing it now and then later finding out we have better use for it at a time when we're dealing with a myriad of issues in the budget process. So, I'd ask that we strongly consider not putting the $5 million into this housing fund at this time, but reevaluate it as the fiscal year continues.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, and I obviously respect everybody's opinion here today, but I just want to reiterate the fact that we've already cut back our commitment to the Housing Trust Fund by some $36 million from what we originally said we believed in and we wanted to have happen. And the idea that maybe later we can relook at it and then add it back, I've been told that, again, that's not, that's not how it works. The Housing Department has told me that they need to get out on the street now with that $9 million and begin leveraging those funds. And in fact, again, my vision for particularly many of my public housing projects is to look at homeownership, redeveloping those. And I happen to know that if we leverage these funds and we work with developers, we can get the developers to help us improve our infrastructure, our sidewalks, our streets. That's how we can leverage these funds to ultimately provide for the residents of Los Angeles. I think, you know, I'm going to be making the tough decisions, too, as we move into next year's budget, but I think this would be irresponsible on our part to not at least allow up to $9 million to be leveraged in the Housing Trust Fund. So, I hope we will do that today.
Mr. Smith.
You know, Mr. Vierogosa, I love your passion. You're absolutely right, and in a perfect world, we would jump at it. But this is not a perfect world. Mr. Deaton, do we have the money to do this? Yes or no?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for the short answer, Mr. Deaton. Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to ask some question here on this report that is in front of me and right here. This $56,000, I need to reprogram. Is that correct? Is that in this report? Someone did advise me of that. Nirvanya, could you speak to that, please?
I do, General Fund.
Councilman, that amount that is, shows as unallocated for CD4 is actually from your formula allocation, so you can program as you'd like.
Would it be appropriate if I reprogram it right now to make it easier for you?
Yes, please.
Would you take note? And, Mr. Clerk, $36,942 should be reprogrammed to the rehabilitation of the former Will and Ariel Durant Library on Gardner Street in Hollywood in the 4th District. This is now no longer a library, it's a public building, but I would like it rehabbed for potential other uses, which may include some of the very important programs that we spoke of today, but it's not to be defined. And in addition, the balance of that will be gone to the program known as, if I get it correctly stated right there, Children of Our Ultimate Investment. I believe that's $20,000. Children of Our Ultimate Investment. They have a wonderful program that they run in Venice, and also, I believe, at Bancroft Middle School, where they take children, infants, and pair them up with teenagers to talk about the importance of parenting. And they want to expand that program. So, if that would make it easier, then the following documents will be forwarded to you appropriately in the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Reyes.
You know, colleagues, I have a partner who's obsessed with left turns. But bottom line is, we do have developments that are coming online near rail stations. We do have transit-oriented districts where we do have people who want to invest in the city. We do have those kinds of stakeholders who see themselves living near these rail stations. I can tell you, I have two or three sites where that is about to happen. This $100 million trust fund and increments that we are able to generate will leverage that private dollar, and it will generate more revenue for the city. To not have it happen is short sighted. I have parking lots right now that I'm studying. We have requests for qualifications from developers to see how we can take advantage of that airspace, so that people can live near their homes, so we can generate that revenue base in the areas that traditionally don't get invested in. So, how we structure our environment to create this infusion of capital, to take advantage of this Housing Trust Fund, is critical. I dare say, at least in... I dare say, at least in District 1, we have several areas that we have been cultivating to reach. And I love the director of housing's term, catalytic, how you bring together these different ways of looking at our airspace to generate this housing. So this increment of $100 million trust fund must happen. It's a revenue we have to identify, because it would be short-sighted not to. Because when you look at the ripple effect, when you look at the domino effect, when you look at the multiplier, any term you want to use in economic development, we cannot stay still. We need to change how we do business in the city. We need to take advantage of the revenue that's there just by sheer density, and let's change how we look at business here in the city to generate the revenue base. So I'd like to stand and support Councilmember Han, Councilmember Garcetti, in making sure we don't take back or weaken our position for this fund. Thank you.
Councilman Ledlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. First, let me just again echo the sentiments that a number of you have in congratulating Councilmember Eric Garcetti for really just championing a very difficult process, one of the most challenging processes that we'll ever have to go through. I'll never forget sitting in committee, under his leadership, hearing the testimony from folks coming in through the Handy Worker Program. I acknowledged during committee that I was embarrassed that I actually didn't know about the program, and having seen that advocacy and the level of passion that you all brought in was just amazing. But as a public policy leader, it was also very painful, it was very difficult to even think about removing funding to such a critical program that is going to the heart and soul of taking care of the least amongst us, those who can care for themselves the least, those who can least afford any simple thing such as a repair of a leaky roof. And so Eric Garcetti, it was a tough, tough road to traverse, and I also want to commend the colleagues who are on that committee, from Councilmember Padilla, Reyes, and Parks, and myself as well. Having said that, there's been a lot of discussion today. Mr. Deaton probably was the most poignant. I, for one, will not support any more efforts to reduce any more funding to the Housing Trust Fund, period. Time is of the essence. We've got to stop this raid, we've got to stop what is happening. And I think that, colleagues, this is the last year that we should look at the Housing Trust Fund for anything other than building housing for those people that need it. And so I want to just say, as I know Councilmember Gruel is going to speak next, I think it's time to call the question on this, move forward, and let's start looking at other alternative sources of revenue for the desperately needed programs that we need in the city of L.A.
Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, a lot has been said here, and particularly about the issue of housing and that item that is before us, and the motion. Housing is about jobs. It's about economic development. And if I am, as everyone else here, concerned about our general fund. But we make decisions, colleagues, every single day that utilize general fund, and I am not sure why today we're picking on the Housing Trust Fund. We make, again, every single day, we are doing general fund items. Now, we are going to have to go through when the budget comes forward and make some tough decisions. But to pull out today on the housing item, which we talk about the housing crisis and to say, well, this one we're not going to fund, I disagree. We may have to come back again and look at other items, but the housing that we want to provide, that we wanted to develop, the housing that we want to move near transportation centers, the housing we want to do in redevelopment areas, the housing that we want to be able to provide for people who cannot afford housing, this is an important priority that we talk about. Today, we can take action and not just talk about it and say someday. We have historically in the city keep saying, someday we'll have enough money for housing, someday we'll allocate more. We made a commitment for a Housing Trust Fund. That was actually made even before I was here, but we followed in that effort, and the mayor did as well, to identify the funds. Either we are committed or we're not committed. And today, we need to demonstrate that we are in fact committed and to keep those funds in the consolidated plan. So I would recommend a no vote on the item which would take away those funds.
Mr. Garcetti.
I'd like to call the previous question.
Okay. Will the clerk please announce for clarification each amendment as we, prior to the vote?
Well, you're first taking a vote on the previous question, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, no objection?
The first vote before you would be on the Park-Smith motion to reduce the 9.6 million general fund portion of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund by $5 million.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Four ayes, seven noes. Okay, tabulate?
Four ayes, seven noes.
Okay. That measure did not pass. Please announce the next amendment.
Does Council wish to take items, pending motions 27A, B, and C, together along with the friendly amendments by Councilmember Parks?
Let's take those together.
Correct.
As well as Councilmember Labange's friendly amendments.
And repeat mine, just so you have it right straight.
Yours was to reprogram $36,942 to the rehab of the Durant Library.
Right.
And the remaining balance to the program called Children of Our Ultimate Investment.
Great. And remove the, reduce the 36 to 31, and put $5,000 to the Los Angeles City Fire Memorial at the Fire Museum, as long as we're doing things. $5,000. Okay, friendly amendment. It qualifies. Thank you very much.
Open the roll. Open the roll, members. Tabulate?
11 ayes.
11 ayes.
And then you would have the matter as amended before you.
Okay. Open, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Matter's approved.
Fourth with, please?
Fourth with. Those items move forth.
That has been approved. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, very much for your attendance here on that item. We have not had a public comment yet today. We have, I think, some closed-session items, but why don't we take public comment right now? Like to invite forward first Bob Linden. Rena Mejia. And Edohenes Luviano Zulumbos.
Hi, I'm Bob Linden. Wanted to wish everyone a happy President's, President's Day weekend. I, myself personally, am nostalgic for the, for the days when presidents were actually elected and not selected. But maybe that's just me. I'm here to say thank you, thank you, thank you for your resolution that condemned that unpatriotic piece of trash called the Patriot Act. One might ask, what took you so long to do it, having been preceded by three states and about 250 other communities? One might also ask of those who voted against the condemnation and for the Patriot Act, I guess that would be members Zine and Weiss. One would have to ask, what were you thinking? You took an oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, not shred it, stomp on it, and desecrate it, as such a vote would do. Hopefully, the voters will remember at election time, you supported the decree of a deceitful, demonic, despotic, dysfunctional dictator. In fact, your unpatriotic vote probably makes you prosecutable under the Patriot Act at this point. No lawyer, no charges, et cetera. Instead, I would suggest, instead of Patriot Act support, do something truly patriotic. Work to lessen the adversarial role, the adversarial atmosphere between police and dissenters, because very often what you hear on the street are things that would make this world a better place if the people weren't being pushed around. So perhaps you've heard the famous Benjamin Franklin quote, "They that can give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." So next time, I recommend that the whole council align yourself with Benjamin Franklin and not Benedict Arnold. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Pase. Por delante.
I'm going to need some translation.
Sure. We'll get a translator over there.
... Hijo de un campesino. Y qué casualidad que el hijo anda en esos problemas cuando mis padres lucharon para ganarse la vida y las tierras que hubo un jefe, un gobernante mexicano que fue el señor Lázaro Cárdenas. Le quitaron.
There was a governor, Cárdenas, that took away his land.
Ese señor, Lázaro Cárdenas, fue el presidente y fue el que le dio la mano derecha a todos los campesinos pobres.
Cárdenas was the one that gave the right hand to all the poor farmers.
Porque cuando yo nací esos años y sufrí mucho, sufrimos todos mis hermanos.
Because I was born during those years, and I suffered a lot, myself and my brothers.
Mi santa madre echaba tortillas y lo daba tres tortillas para todo el día.
My holy mother would make tortillas, and she would give us three tortillas for the whole day.
Y por eso andamos luchando para que no los dejen esas tierras que ya están cultivadas por qué razones hay.
That's why we're fighting, because we have already, that land that has already been cultivated.
Y le vuelvo a repetir, señor autoridades, que soy campesino aquí le demuestro mis manos, que esas tierras están cultivadas a puro pulmón, no metimos máquinas ni tratores.
And I can show you with my hands that those lands have been cultivated with our hands, we have not used any machinery.
Ahora luchamos para sembrar producto, porque ahí trabajamos campesinos y campesinas. Hay campesinas que tienen niños y no les alcanza el sueldo que ganan y de ahí sale para darles de comer.
Because we are farmers, there's women farmers, men farmers, and they don't have enough money to buy, so they get their supplies from there.
Gracias. Gracias y le pedimos a las autoridades que los den la mano derecha como se la dio el señor Lázaro Cárdenas a nuestros padres para trabajar la tierra y cultivarlas, para sembrar producto y alimentación para darle a comer a los niños.
Gracias, señor. Thank you.
But we ask you to give us your right hand, the way Lázaro Cárdenas gave the farmers the right hand so that they can survive with their children.
Señor Ramos?
Perdón. Hace diez años que el banco nos prestó ese terreno.
Your name?
Yo soy Manuel Garay. Este, nos prestó este terreno para cultivarlo porque era puro basura allí, mucha basura que había, y nos hemos ahí trabajado, había mucha piedra, y hemos cultivado ahí para nuestros hijos, para nuestros nietos, viñetos. Yo tengo 74 años y dónde voy a ir a la calle a andar como las personas que hay en la calle ahí, sin ninguna enseñanza a mis hijos ni a mis nietos.
They gave us this land when there was trash, rocks, we worked this land, and I've worked with it for my children, my grandchildren. I'm 74 years old, and I don't want to be out just looking for food for them.
Y por eso queremos que nos hagan el favor de seguirnos prestando ahí el terreno para que nuestros hijos sepan de dónde viene lo que uno come, lo que uno arriba a la mesa para verduras, todo lo que uno necesita para su mesa.
That's why I want you to give us that land, keep lending us that land so that we can show our children where that food comes from, the one that comes to their table, their vegetables, everything that comes to their table.
Gracias, señor.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you, everyone.
Señor Ramos? Hoy hablo el señor Ramos? Your name, please.
My name is Nadine Diaz.
Okay. Please speak.
My name is Nadine Diaz, and I'm a third-generation constituent of Boyle Heights and a third-generation alumnus of the University of Southern California. I am Yaki Indian, Chicana, and Japanese-American. I'm employed as a researcher at the University of Southern California Kek School of Medicine in the Department of Environmental Health. For the past 10 years, I have been part of a research team investigating the risk of electromagnetic fields and breast cancer among Latinas and African-American women in Los Angeles, and as well as a children's health study in California. I'm here today as president of the Los Angeles Land Use Coalition to share, to state for the record that the Coalition supports the South Central Farmers at 41st and Alameda. The mission of the Coalition is to collectively work together to create and develop policy and legislation to implement urban gardens throughout the city of Los Angeles and the state of California. We do not support the forced removal of farmers and the destruction of the farmer's economic base and food chain. It is critical that you, as political leaders, have a balance, a checks and balance when developing land use projects in our great city, inasmuch you need checks and balances when you are working with 501(c)(3) nonprofits. While it is a fact that there are many 501(c)(3) nonprofits that do very much for our communities, there are also 501(c) nonprofits that basically take from our poor communities. As a graduate student at the University of Southern California School of Social Work in the Community Organization Planning and Administration Program, we are here to support the farmers as well. And in closing, I would like to mention to Ms. Perry, you are also a graduate of the University of Southern California. Our motto is courage, integrity, and also to work with people in a balanced manner.
Nadine, could you please wrap up? There are other people who want to speak. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So we are here to work collectively, together with all of you, to come up with a plan. Councilman Antonio Villagosa, kudos to you in working together with us. And we all know that you will be at the farm on Saturday at 2:30 p.m. We also would like to invite all of the council members to join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Kobe ready to speak? Kobe?
Yes, I'm going to speak for Rena. My name is Francisco Lozornio. I reside at 6120 and 1/2 Buena Vista Terrace. I'm also a graduate student from the School of Social Work, and I visited the farm. And when I went there, I saw families gathering together, working together. I saw elders there gathering, working together. And I was shocked that these families had to now be relocated. They've been farming for over 12 years. They built a community within a community, within a community. So I'm here to ask that you support the farmers in whichever way that you can, and I know that hopefully this great city of Los Angeles will be there for the farmers and for the familias and for the campesinos. And I also want to add that, you know, in honor of Dolores Huerta, it's ironic that these urban farmers are being asked to be relocated. And that's it, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comment. Muchas gracias. Shia Butler?
On a more serious note. Good afternoon, council members. Good afternoon, Los Angeles.
We are truly the city of angels. Go ahead.
That's right. How appropriate. My name is Angelina, not to be confused with Angeline, the famous woman that you see in Los Angeles on the billboards in Hollywood, although sometimes we do get confused for one another, you know. I have a message for everyone here today to commend you on all of your hard work and to wish you a very happy Valentine's Day. So it goes a little something like this. Hello, my baby, hello, my darling, hello, my Valentine. Happy Valen- Happy Valentine's Day to you. Happy Valentine's Day to you. Happy Valentine's Day, Los Angeles. Happy Valentine's Day to you.
Thank you very much.
Good work, you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. It appears that Cupid didn't make it today, so we appreciate you filling in.
Point of information, Mr. President, I think if an angel ever walks in this door in the future, she sat through this whole meeting, I certainly appreciate that. I hope you visit the top of City Hall because it's a beautiful day. Okay, thank you very much.
Before we go to closed session? Okay. We have two more items before we go to closed session.
Item three was called special by Councilmember Labange.
And the item 27 that we handled deals with this issue. It's the Gardner Street Durant Library. We're trying to get it restored. And members, as you know, from time to time, we have old city buildings. There's a new library on Sunset Boulevard. This is the old facility on Gardner. This directs the opportunity for us to rehab it and sets us in that course. I ask for an eye vote on number three. Senate?
Okay. Seeing no other speakers, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tell you the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that measure passes.
Mr. President, forthwith on three, please, and 25. 25, three and 25.
And 25 without objection. Now we move to item four.
Item four was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I want to bring this to our attention. As you know, since Prop 218 was approved eight years ago, it empowered our residents to challenge and sometimes even overturn local levies. As you know, property owners in the city receive a ballot to vote on whether or not to pay a lighting assessment fund, as it's called, a street lighting maintenance assessment ballot. But because I believe these ballots are confusing and hard to understand, people either don't vote or if they vote no, not really knowing what that means, and then their lights get turned off. In September, I introduced a motion to instruct the Bureau of Street Lighting to rebalance six street lighting assessment districts that had failed during the first balloting. And during the last Education Neighborhoods Committee meeting, it became clear to me that, like some of our other departments, the Bureau of Street Lighting was having a difficult time with their outreach and a difficult time in really explaining to people what it meant when they voted no, that it would actually mean the lights would be turned off. I think people were confused by the word maintenance. I think they were wondering if that wasn't about keeping the grass clean around the light pole or getting the graffiti off. I don't think they realized that maintenance meant keeping the lights on. There's another problem that I wanted to bring up, and it might be a problem in your district as well. For instance, in the lighting district in San Pedro, the lights were turned off after one ballot was received that voted no. The property owner that voted no would have been responsible for 1.3% or $21.22 of the total lighting cost in that district. Here's the rub. The city's Department of Water and Power owns eight parcels of land in that district and would have been responsible for paying 75% of the lighting bill. The DWP, I found out, and other of our public agencies have a policy of voting neutral in these lighting assessment districts. So people don't understand that they would be responsible for paying the majority of that lighting district. I think that happens with the Port of Los Angeles. I mean, somehow along the line, we have a policy of them voting neutral or not voting. So my recommendation, and I hope you'll support it, is that we set up a task force that includes Bureau of Street Lighting, represented from neighborhood councils, DWP, other pertinent agencies in the city, and report back to us in 60 days as to how to write a ballot that is clear, concise, delivers a message, and that delivers a message that when you vote no, your lights get turned off. I believe these ballots should be written in other languages so that the outreach is more thorough and we get the kind of response that we asked for. And I've asked for a looking into why our city departments have remained neutral in these lighting assessment districts. I think that's a mistake, so I hope you'll support me on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for bringing this up. An interesting problem happened in my district where two new traffic lights were put in in the area, but they also put the electrolyzers for the streetlights. So the city orders the traffic lights, then they put the electric leers up. Then they have the vote. Then they turn off this, they have the traffic light, but they turn off the streetlight. And then they go out and they post it and say this was turned off by vote of the people. And now, unfortunately, and I know Mr. Zain, who is on jury duty today, but often articulates all the traffic accident potential challenges. If there is a accident at Tracy and St. George Street and the streetlights were turned off at night, you know, what complication is caused? And it hasn't made sense for me yet. And I know there's some, there's new consequence because of 218, which is still in there, but still it should be clarified. So I know Phil Reed and the department staff at the Bureau of Street Lighting are very articulate, but we have to get it in line. And I like the point you made, Janice, about other city departments of not engaging. Street lighting is extremely important. Bright lights, good lights, safe neighborhoods. So anyway, I applaud you on that. If someone could explain St. George and Tracy Street next to 3939 Tracy at John Marshall High, I will be very happy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Now that Councilman Labange has spoken, we could take the vote. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Announce the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. That measure passes, forthwith.
That leaves the closed session item, Mr. President.
Next, we will clear the chambers so we can go into closed session. Sergeants, please let us know when you've cleared the chambers.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
There's excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused to leave at 11:15 on Wednesday, March 3rd for city business, meets council policy.
So Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Councilmember Cárdenas requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 AM on Friday, March 19th for city business. That also meets council policy.
Ms. Hahn moves and Mr. Smith seconds.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, members, we'd like to ask any announcements at this time. Call on Mr. Reyes of the First District.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, it's very exciting to announce that the NBA, they have this legacy project. We had David Stern, the commissioner, over at the Boys and Girls Club in Lincoln Heights. We had some great, great players there. And they physically, Karl Malone, we had Michael Cooper, Alton Baylor, Bob Lanier, some great, great players from the NBA. WNBA, they were there to help and support. They repainted the exterior of the building, the interior of the building. They brought computers, Dell, Scholastic, Home Depot, all brought in resources and materials.
Antonio.
And just changed this great facility, Los Angeles Boys and Girls Club, into a place where kids who really have limited options for recreation education to actually come into a place. And David Stern was very eloquent, said, you know, everything's important, you know, the slam dunk contest, the big NBA game that's coming this weekend, but there's nothing more important, investing in our future and our children. And I just want to publicly thank them for the great work, for the great work of the Boys and Girls Club and Howard Sutkin, Joel Sorrell, the president board, for the tremendous job they did at the Lincoln Heights Alley Boys and Girls Club. Just want to say thank you, let the city of LA know what a great job the NBA is doing in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Since Mr. Labange isn't down here, he's up there. Let me wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day.
All right.
And Friday, the 13th is today, but it's going okay so far. And I hope everybody tomorrow has a day full of love and romance and that the city of angels does a lot of kissing.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? I would just want to follow that. It is a wonderful Saint Valentine's Day, but I had to say, I had to put a plug in for the American Red Cross. There's blood drives, I know Tony Cárdenas, our council colleague, for the Sixers, you can announce it, they're low on blood. So not only have a wonderful Valentine's Day, but if you can, donate blood at the facility throughout the county, wherever it's listed. At this time, I'd like to ask all to stand for adjourned motions. All to stand and pay attention in the rear of the chambers, please, Sergeant. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it's with great sadness, and I know that many of us knew this individual who I asked that we adjourn in memory of today, but the passing of Don Brewster, who passed away on February 10th with a sudden illness. Many of us might have known him most recently as one of Jack Scott's deputies, but he's somebody who influenced this community in a number of ways and formed a lot of friendships here at City Hall very deeply. Don was somebody who's active in the Stonewall Democratic Club. He was born in Bellflower, California, got his AA at Moore Park Community College and his BA from Cal State Northridge. And I know Mr. Smith is going to say a few words as well. He worked full-time as a postal clerk while attending college, put himself through school. And then he was selected by CSUN as a Leon Panetta Institute intern. He interned for Nancy Pelosi and then came back to Los Angeles and worked for State Senator Jack Scott. I knew Don as a good friend. I also heard him in his public capacity. And every time I heard him speak, I was sure that one day he would be joining us as a colleague in some capacity at the state level or locally. He was that articulate, he cared that much about what he believed in, and he was that special. He represented Senator Scott in outreach in the San Fernando Valley, issues dealing with arts and entertainment, MTA, Caltrans, gay and lesbian community, and water issues as well. He was a member of the Executive Board of Stonewall Democratic Club and elected member of our county committee for the Democratic Party here, Central Committee, and was a volunteer on many, many campaigns, probably a lot of folks who are here today. He graduated from the Valley Leadership Institute and was awarded in 2003 the Eleanor and Franklin Roosevelt Democrat of the Year. He also was, I think, somebody who, in his spare time, really went out of the way to care for people. A lot of people who take off their public service hat when they leave work, Don was not one of them. He was only 35 years old, or just about 35 years old, when he died so suddenly. And we know that you are looking down on us somewhere, Don, but we will miss you tremendously. I know my staff had lunch with Don just last week, and he was a truly, truly special soul. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. I'd like, I think, all members on Don. Councilmember Wendy Grohl.
Thanks, Mr. Labange. And I wanted to add my condolences on Don Brewster. He was everywhere in the San Fernando Valley and in meetings representing Jack Scott. Always had a smile on his face, always was working the room with somebody who, I think, worked 24/7 for the betterment of this community. It's really a tragic loss for his family, for his family of Senator Jack Scott and the rest of us who had the distinct pleasure of knowing him and learning from him. And he was tenacious at times to make sure his boss was there and part of everything. And he just believed in the government process and public service. And so I join my colleagues, Eric Garcetti and the rest I knew. Many of us knew Don and thought the world of him, so my condolences. I have another, if we're ready to go. I didn't know if anyone else wanted to make a comment on Don, but otherwise I have one myself.
Councilmember Grohl, please.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Mr. Lito Aguilar. He died Saturday, January 31st, in a job-related incident. He was a longtime JT Wimsat employee. Many of his coworkers, they kind of had a family there at JT Wimsat, and they feel very strongly they've suffered a tremendous personal loss. Lito Aguilar had been working at our Studio City site for the last three months and had been part of the Wimsat team since inception 35 years ago. He was a hard worker and dedicated family man. A trust has been set up to help his family in these very difficult times. And for more information on how to make a financial donation, you can contact Preferred Bank and Care Friends of Israel, Lito Aguilar, at 213-891-1188. I'd like to adjourn today in his memory and his survived by his wife, two children, and five grandchildren.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of two people. One is somewhat belated Luther Sherman, was the father of Denise Sherman, who works for our city personnel department. He was born in Shawnee, Oklahoma, in 1927, passed away at the age of 77 on January 25th of this year. He was a paratrooper in the Air Force and later served in the Army and is a veteran of World War II. He's the second of 11 children, but the first to pass away. His services were held at Angeles Funeral Home, January 31st of this year. He leads five children, 16 grandchildren, and 20 great-grandchildren. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Anthony T. Heinsburgen, who's a lifetime LA resident. His firm was responsible for restoration of the interior of many landmark buildings in Los Angeles and across the country. His firm restored the interior of the Wilton Theater, the Hollywood Roosevelt Hotel, and the Los Angeles Library. His company was also the team that refurbished Carnegie Hall in New York and was involved in the restoration of Mission Inn in Riverside and the Washington State Capitol Rotunda in Olympia. His father, Anthony B. Heinsburgen, started the company in 1918, which at the time was named A.B. Heinsburgen and Company. For seven decades, the family business was located in a castle-like structure on Beverly Boulevard near La Brea, where the elder Heinsburgen built in 1927 with the bricks used from the old Los Angeles City Hall. The family members plan to continue operating the business, but they will have a celebration of his life April 23rd at the company's headquarters. He leaves two daughters and four grandchildren.
I'd like all members on that for the contribution that family has made to restore all the buildings that Councilmember Parks mentioned. Members, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Cecilia Alatorre, who is the mother of Rick Alatorre, great pilot with the LAPD Air Support Division. Hector, their other son, is a Beverly Hills police officer, worked with Chief Iyonon. And also their daughter who worked with Sister Jenny over at Puente Learning Center. And another daughter who was preceded earlier, who worked for our city attorney. Cecilia was a wonderful, loving woman who looked to be 75 years old. I knew the family well, and they lived just off Boyle Avenue in Boyle Heights and was truly an inspiration to her whole family and to all who met her. I ask we adjourn in memory of Cecilia Alatorre. Thank you. Second for Mr. Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll? Council is adjourned. Happy Saint Valentine's Day.